Our next topic is going to be Housing Choice Small Town Capital Grant Update with Woodward and Curran. They've been working on the plans for sidewalks, for South Street, and for Broad Street as outlined in the grant we had received last year. And they're here to present their plans for those sidewalks.
Thank you. Scott Maderas from Woodward and Curran at Kent and Albert George participating as well via Zoom. We appreciate the chance to come in and we wanted to, this was our first opportunity. Previously, the grant that you just referenced was granted to the town and we were selected to work on development of sidewalk plans which would deal with issues on Broad Street as well as-
South Street.
South Street, the Broad Street and South Street.
Yeah.
So we developed some preliminary drawings that we shared with the town administrator. What we wanted to do tonight was just explain some of the pitfalls that we ran into, some of the things that may want to be considered by the town.
I can imagine.
There were some very large trees along the way.
Large trees, stone walls, close to properties, budding properties, narrow road width.
So we developed a memorandum that talked about some of safe routes to school standards that are typically utilized when you're developing a sidewalk as a guide. But then we also developed a memo that talks about some of those pitfalls and we provide those to you through the town administrator. And we were able to sit and talk with her about it. And we figured that you maybe, you had those before the meeting here tonight. So we don't know how, what level of detail you want to get into. So Ken, who's on the phone participating, was going to talk through some of the specifics.
Yeah, I think we can review the documents at our own pace as well. And the people can probably get them online. So we don't want to tie it up too long. But a general overview, get people an idea of what's planned, what some of the difficulties are. And we still don't know if the trees that are there may be historic, they may be, tree ward may have issues. So we still even know how that's going to work when we get to it. But electric, continue with that.
I think that's kind of the issue. We wanted to bring forth, before we started doing a full design of the grant, really was, these two projects were listed on your green communities, green streets. So basically, that'll allow you to access grants potentially up to $400,000 a year to do some of this work. And so this was the first, the first cut at establishing a couple of those projects that were on the list to get some designs on paper so that you had something to work on.
Excellent. Is it Ken?
Community Compact? Is that different program?
It's part of the Complete Streets Program, I think it was.
I knew it started C somewhere else.
Kenneth, welcome.
Hi. Did you think, can you all hear me all right?
A little faint.
Try to get closer to the mic or phone.
And now you have plans. I'm not sure if you have them readily available or if it's something I can share through my computer.
Can, is Ken able to share his screen?
I'll give him permission.
I don't know.
Maybe this one will work.
Plastic clip though, the table.
This one's a plastic.
Come right off the plastic.
Yeah.
You may a lot.
Okay, so you-
Well, there's a lot of slack here though.
As long as we get it up and closer, we'll get it. We get a better shot at hearing this. It's high tech here.
All right, Ken, you're able to share your screen now. You should be able to.
We don't need that. It's for folks at home.
Right.
Be able to see what we're talking about.
And I don't know, we don't have too many on there. I don't think so.
It says host disabled participants screen sharing.
Hold on. Let me see if I can un- this.
Do we just have the four that we?
Uh.
We don't have anybody viewing other than-
I don't pay anybody. No, no, no.
So then we probably don't need to worry about that too much. We all have the papers. We can go along with it unless they're different.
No, as you said, we've got a couple of community members on attendees.
Yeah.
Or do we, or is that four attendees, just the four panelists are the only attendees?
No, we do have a couple of residents on here.
Okay, so it's attendees. They list, I didn't, I didn't know if the attendees counted panelists and viewers, or if that was just, so it's just separate viewers.
Yeah, it's not giving me that option, but I can see if I can-
Do you want to write more? Hey Ken, we're getting close.
Way to the right.
Way right.
Way right, more.
Yep.
Oh, that's where you were. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so maybe, do you have an option now?
It still says host. I see the option, but it says host disabled participant sharing.
Well, that wasn't intentional. Maybe, oh, here you go. Now you have the option. You should.
All right. I see it now. All right. So I will, I will bring this up.
Okay.
Let me know when you can see my screen.
We got it.
Perfect. Awesome. So first of all, thanks for having us this evening. As Scott mentioned, you know, we look at Broad Street, we're looking at South Street, we're going to start off Broad Street. So really what we're, what we're here to look for is sort of high level overview of the project itself. The goal, as Scott mentioned, is it's a sidewalk project. And while on the face of it, sidewalks seem like a pretty simple solution, just forms and concrete or puts a pavement down if you've got a sidewalk, there are some complicated issues that arise. And we wanted to bring those attention to the select board. You know, the things we will be discussing are vegetation, trees. What we've done is provided these figures. There's two figures of Broad Street. This is the first one. And this is the second. The purpose of there's a, the goal of the project areas at the top of the page. And the images at the bottom of the page represent potential conflicts that might arise from roads or potential improvements that we'd be discussing. So the whole, the main purpose of this project is to develop sidewalks that meet guidelines for the safe routes to schools program. And so what we've done is we've provided a memo to the town that outlines certain parameters and recommendations that are part of the program such as sidewalk material, sidewalk width, bike lane width, shared bike lanes, et cetera. So we won't go into too much detail again. As you mentioned, you know, this is all information that the town has at their disposal for review. So what we're going to be asking for is really some feedback tonight as to what you would like to see in terms of sidewalks, materials, preferred routes, alternate routes, any concerns if you might have them right in one direction. So we'll start off on Broad Street. We'll work our way into South Street. So as you can see with these exhibits, up and east, right, up and east, left hand corner here. I'll zoom in a little bit. But what we're really looking for is a proposed road and sidewalk plan that now part of this project is, as I said, to install sidewalks. It's not to repair or rebuild the road. And so what we're trying to do is work within the existing space within the right of way. You know, that means allowing a 11-foot lane, small, a 1-foot shoulder, a 1-foot shoulder, a 3-foot planting strip if space allows, and then try to maintain an 1-foot sidewalk. Ideally sidewalks for safe routes for the schools would be anywhere between 8 and 10 feet wide. And the reason for that is because they allow, it's a multi-modal path right here, and allow bicycles and transportation alongside pedestrians. In this case, the idea would be to promote pedestrian equipment. If towns may want to go a little hard, and that's a bit of the feedback that we're looking, looking to get from this meeting. So as we start along, a couple of things you'll notice about the plan is we have these squares. And these squares directly relate to the photo below. Again, the small black arrows, the direction of the photos, you really get a sense of where these things are, where these photos are taken, and the constraints that we're going to be up against in this project. I'm not going to go into too in-depth, but it is, was mentioned previously, the trees in this area, especially on Broad Street, are of significant size. And that's going to pose a considerable challenge. You can see, for instance, this tree here is encroaching on the pavement. There's some root intrusion around the area. It's having an impact on the neighboring stone walls and the sidewalks that do exist. So what we're looking for is any feedback as to that that might impact the design from a tree ward in first sight on the history of these trees in this area. There's another tree of that size. One of the things we're looking at on Broad Street is trying to maintain a consistent look and feel to the street and minimize the amount of crossings between pedestrians across the road. So what you see here is on the eastern side of the road, eastern side of Broad Street, it's just connecting down here on the southern end to the existing sidewalks that come from downtown. Existing sidewalks are concrete. So we're showing at this point a connection to that and maintaining it all the way down to the school. You'll note again that we don't have any pedestrian crossings between these two intersections. Thus, this is what we would consider the primary road. Ideally primary road, again, trying to reduce the amount of crossings on the road. You'll note here, the sidewalk does dip in from the existing down up to the edge of pavement. And the reason for that again is that we're trying, trying to get a 3-foot planting strip. But that's not always achievable in this area due to stone walls, trees, drainage patterns. You'll note that there are some catch basins out there. So this is the primary route that we'd like to get some feedback on. And then in the event that some of those trees are of substantial size and vegetation or stone walls can't be impacted, this is the secondary route that we've, that we're looking at. Again, trying to minimize as many crossings as possible. But this one's over, in comparison to the previous one, we have to do crosswalks that would have to be installed. Those crosswalks, the first of which is on the southern end. Next two would be across Union Street and High Street. So one thing to note about this proposed design is that it does afford a little bit more separation between the travel lane of the road and the sidewalk. Where that comes into play and where that's a benefit is that you have room to put the sidewalk in without having to install a curb. On the, on the contrary side, if you go on the other side of the road, there's more of a grade elevation change on that side of the road. There's going to be less separation between vehicles and sidewalk if it's right up against the travel lane. And thus, a sidewalk with a curb may be appropriate on the eastern side. So that's the two roadways that are two, I guess, possible roads for sidewalk on Broad Street. I'll happy to answer, kind of answer any questions you have on that before we move on to South Street.
Quick question. Are you suggesting that this second option here is likely to, or potentially have more curb work or berm work than the other side? Is that what I just heard you say?
Yes.
So on this road here, on this road, there would be, it would appear that there would be less curb work than on the other side.
Three sidewalks, three crosswalks.
If it's the primary road, that primary road would be on the eastern side. There's less right of way to work with. You'll note that this blue line on the page is the right of way for the roadway. On the eastern side, that right of way is right up along the stone walls that is in the area. So there's less split over per se, get a sidewalk in there. So there may be a chance you have to put in a curb. On this western side, you do have the ability to get a grass median strip. One thing to point out though, on this western side, and why it's not our primary road, is that there are utility poles along here that potentially would have to be impacted to install this road. That's obviously one of the things that's we progress from this stage into design. We have to coordinate with the utility companies to make sure that they're, that we don't disrupt their operations.
I think you're going to have obstructions, no matter how you slice it, when you're in a densely, relatively densely populated area and you're trying to go in after the fact and folks have been there for an extended period of time. They've sort of encroached on the right of way. The road's not always in the center of the right of way. So you're going to have something to deal with one way or the other, which is why we wanted to show everything and give the opportunity for you to either consider it at whatever level of committees or whoever needs to chime in, public safety. You know, we try to minimize the number of crossings. Folks, kids going to school or, or just general pedestrians and residents crossing the road, much times is just creating conflict with pedestrians and vehicles.
Have you found that? Has National Grid or utility companies, from your experience, been difficult in ordering sidewalks around poles?
Historically, it's not a great idea. You want to try to coordinate to move them. Once you have an excessive amount of area where you can maintain your width and work and work around the utility pole, it's typically not a great idea unless you're able to work behind them and they're in the grass strip. But, you know, typically relocating them or finding a way to be on the other side of the street and get that, you know, if they alternate, you'll work around it if you can. But I think we're going to have a bigger issue when we look at our next road with utility poles. So I think it's going to be a large conversation with your utility representative for your community. And hopefully they can, they can make some adjustments.
Thank you. I have no further questions on this road.
Dylan, you want to add anything before we move to South Street?
I would point out, one final thing on Broad Street to consider, as we will consider on South Street, is the speed limit here. And in this case, it's 30 miles an hour on this road. When comparing this and putting crosswalks in here, that's something to consider. So getting feedback from emergency, you know, emergency departments on potential conflicts of pedestrians or, you know, pedestrians or vehicle accidents in this area may be appropriate. It may inform the rug that's selected. The one last thing I would say too is the alternate route on the western side of the road. There isn't an existing sidewalk on that side of the road. Whereas on the eastern side of the road, which you see on your screen, a good portion of this road has some form of a sidewalk. So there is a path that's sort of laid out. And it was, you could just see it's sort of laid out, but it's encroached upon pretty substantially by vegetation. So when comparing the two, keep that in mind is that there is some path that we can follow on this side of the road versus the other side.
Yeah, I would think that when you use that side, now you have to demolition the old sidewalk rather than just clean up the land. So I would propose it might actually make more work to work with the existing sidewalk rather than cut a new one in on the other side. And I look at all those stone walls. And if you walk down that street, all the vegetation, the stone walls, I think we'd have a fight in our hands with everybody trying to go down there and widen things up. So I-
So what's that, I think?
I lean towards the west side.
To South Street. And I think National Grid, as I mentioned on, on the, the last sentence on, the last bit on, on Broad Street, the speed limit here is going to play a factor. We know that South Street, there is a connection to the downtown, an active connection to the downtown that we have sidewalks at. And when we were last up there, we noticed that there's sidewalk construction going on and out. So this tie into that, ideally, we continue on. I believe this is the end of the project here. So start down, I believe it's this way. Yep. So this is the, I'm actually sorry. Yep. So down here, this is, this is heading towards downtown. We're going to pick up the sidewalks as we're coming from downtown. Again, it would be, if you're trying to look at this, or if this goes up into the town hall, these squares are representing where photos were taken during our sidewalk. We took it at the end of August, really September. And then these circles are locations of potential improvements. In this case, what we know is we have this potential improvement to see may be that's crosswalks, but also what we would call rapid rectangular flashing beacons or RRFBs. Those are, they're rid crosswalks. So if someone, a pedestrian approaches it, they would push a button and they would flashlights warning drivers of oncoming, of a potential cross. In this area, with the speed limit being 40 miles an hour, having such improvements in such crosswalks is a critical item to, you know, warn of pedestrians in an area where you necessarily expect them. Unlike on Broad Street where we had a road that could go all the way across from one end to the other without having any crossings. We're not so fortunate in this instance. You'll note that there's a crossing that goes from east over to the western side and then back over about 500 feet or so. And that's because in this area here, way around these photocaps, there's a significant ledge out cropping on this side, on the eastern side of the road, where putting in a sidewalk would be extremely difficult to do. And so what we're proposing is to bring a sidewalk across the road and then back over. There is a, you can kind of see it in this photo here, there's a large head wall for a stream crossing. And again, by bringing this back over, we're going to avoid impacting that stream crossing. You'll see later on, when we get into alternate routes, there may be an option for bringing this sidewalk back over or keeping it on one side of the road versus the other. But this is an area where we do have some challenges that we're trying to avoid with this. Up in the order here, you'll notice we do have a conflict type that's identified to show and call out what we're looking at as potential issues. Trees, hydrants, utility poles, same issues again along this structure of road. There's substantial utility poles. And so coordination with utility companies is going to become critical. So zoom in here and we'll continue on to the next portion. So again, continuing to head south after we've crossed back over, we're staying on the southern side of the road, avoiding a crossing over here and a wall on that road. Again, as to note, there may be an opportunity to stay on the western side of the road. But again, it introduces more crossings on the wall on that. And that's sort of one of the things we're trying to avoid. You'll note along the way, similar to Broad Street, the area has a number of stone walls that we're trying to avoid impacting throughout this. And the right of way is somewhat limited in this stretch of the road. It starts opening up a little bit. So we've got a little, some items to consider here when we're laying this out. So what you see here is on the western side of the road, we're continuing south. Even at the US Police Superintendent's Office, we have a slice in school at the level. So this roadway, heading down, we've got the additional crossing on the driveway before crossing back over at the police service. Again, this is something that we may want to put up for consideration is that the right of way in this area, if you get some light now, you'll see it's pretty narrow. There's more room to work. So having an alternate path on the western side of the road is an option. We've identified that alternate path as alternate one on the plan. You'll note, we've shown here a view of what alternate one would be. It would be up above, in all likelihood, above the sidewalk, the stone wall, or just below it. There's a couple of options we can, we can look at. Again, considering, taking into consideration the, the number of utility poles in the area. Now as we head further down, again, you can see, you know, we keep it on the western side of the road, we can be able to reduce the amount of crossings in the road to avoid the driveway that's in school. And again, now we're heading down, final stretch here, continuing south. We've got a number of stone walls on the western side of the road. Again, we're trying to avoid a number of driveway crossings by keeping it on the western side of the road, which is ultimately where the, the end of the project lies at this pool down the road here. So that's the route that we're looking at. Similar, safe routes to schools, we're looking at a 5-foot sidewalk with an intermediate 3-foot planting strip to get a little bit of buffer, an opposing curb at this point, unless there's a need for it with the sidewalk being right up against the pavement. So with that, having to open it up to any questions?
When you, when you get into the point maybe where there's a, you know, we say let's go with more of a true design versus like a kind of a feasibility, what are we going with? Would you be proposing added streetlights or coordinating crosswalks with where streetlights are located?
So right now, that's a very question. Right now, this plan, the initial thought was that we're, we're not proposing any streetlights. It would be, it's a discussion we should have with the project anytime there's a crossing, making sure that that crossing is well lit is important. As we mentioned on Broad Street, and as we mentioned on here, there are significant utility poles in the areas. So coordination with National Grid is going to become critical. I don't, right now, the project doesn't include the design of lighting, but it should be something that's, that's considered, especially if there's multiple crossings on a 40 mile an hour structure.
And I think there's no way to anticipate how many crossings might or might not be necessary before you get into a design. So we've done, and our contract does take us through design. We just stopped here to get guidance from the community. Lighting is definitely something that's critical. So that's why we specified the blinking signs and all the new technology for the, for the crossing.
Right.
Public safety in terms of related to crossings would be paramount. The length of sidewalk or the whole line you'll put in sidewalk, once you get out of the downtown, historically in a smaller community like yours, you wouldn't really light them. It's primarily a rural, you know, travel pathway to get to school or, or what have you. So typically, you wouldn't light them in terms of nighttime, general nighttime use, but those crossings for sure.
Okay, yeah. It was the crossings more importantly, especially because like, say you do this, it's going to take the rest of the town a little while to get used to. Somebody might be crossing here. And so lighting it up would help. Just say, hey, somebody does cross here or something.
Crossings are always a challenge, especially when you have a rural roadway like that with a high speed. I know my kids go to school at a location where they have campus on both sides of the roadway. Folks zip through there, you know, it's the middle of campus. And a kid almost got hit last week. And that's after they had, they have flashing signs that the kid, as soon as the kids approach it, it lights up like there's no tomorrow. And folks still blow through.
And I'm sure it's 20 miles an hour through the middle of the school as well, but nobody cares. They just-
Yeah, pretty tough to police it.
Yeah. That's, that's one tough thing about crossing. But it's, it's not that busy a road. So I think crossing is reasonable to do.
Just hope folks are diligent when they cross and they're careful. But, but yeah, it's still dangerous.
More people heading there are going to be high school age, middle school, high school age. Whereas back on, on Broad Street, it's all the elementary. So I'm not overly concerned about crosswalks, especially if they're lighted at the evening hours. Because, you know, sporting events and things in the future, I'm sure people will walk, especially kids will walk it at night, but not all that often.
And we, we looked in this area where we're, that area where it's brown, I think is a solar, a solar field back there. And so there's a number of National Grid poles to carry the, the utility and the air connect work. And we looked, as he, Ken explained, if you went on the post office side, you might go up behind the wall. Maybe you need easement on that property outside of the right of way would make sense. We talked about the Stetson School side. I think we heard from the police chief already that he preferred to stay on that side, on the non-Stetson School side if possible.
Because the type of facility Stetson is, we're better to stay more clear than with a crosswalk.
Right, right.
One thing that I know historically, and I don't know if it's changed anymore with the way they did the solar and tried to put the trees and bushes along, but that used to be a big wind drift issue that would just load with snow and- to be a big wind drift issue that would just load with snow in the winter.
Right, they always put the orange stop fence up.
The snow fence.
Yeah, and I thought they were going to do the Italian off of Walinette. Walinette, yeah, not, but they did, so I don't know how that got sorted out, but we left it up to planning board to settle it with them.
But there is room there, as you can see it. Is that the post office, the postal building?
Probably in.
I think it is, just beyond the white line. So you could potentially run behind that stone wall and avoid those poles on the Stetson School side?
Yeah, there appears to be some road to go down here or, again, similar to Broad Street, there are some pretty substantial trees here. One thing that could be evaluated is looking at maintaining this width, what we know it on Broad Street even here, since some of these lanes with are pretty substantial, greater than eleven feet. So by establishing a more consistent width, that might be an option. And then we can steal back some of the right of way or for our sidewalk if that's the way we want to go. Again, just looking at the right of way is a little bit wider on this side. You do have a little bit of more width, but you'll note this sort of gray out alternate one route would go right up against this stone wall and probably wipe out that tree.
But certainly one of the biggest, aside from the utility pole issue, by and large, we're talking about a lot of tree conflicts along the way on both roadways.
Yeah, and I don't know if this road is as big a concern for historic preservation as the trees in Broad Street are very substantial. They've been there for a few hundred years. And, you know, that doesn't look like as old a tree there.
Right.
I would think they're probably younger growth on this road and less concerned if we have to remove them.
And we didn't know whether you had any historic tree bylaws or any committees that would take that up specifically in terms of contemplating or if that was solely within your purview and your.
We have a tree warden currently, don't we? Is it still?
Tree warden is superintendent.
Oh, is it? Okay, because it used to be, yeah.
But the, I don't think either of these streets, but we need to check just to make sure they don't in the town scenic road group, because that does include more oversight and input than just the tree ward.
A lot of our roads do, so it wouldn't surprise me if at least Broad Street is.
So we just need to verify that. We do have a zoning map or something that calls out which streets are part of that. For some reason, it doesn't ring a bell. I think, I don't think it's there, but it could be.
And this is a pretty primary road, you know, so it, I guess it wouldn't make you hurt all the way in the alley, but it seems like this would have to be less likely than one of your downtown roads that have that.
Right, the Broad Street one is right up in the center. It's a lot of the older homes in town and on, off to the right, it's rugged.
But you go by Grogan, and Grogan is on that list.
Right.
So I'm not sure at that intersection again, there may be a little bit if there's trees where it would get into the, who has a say? You know how that, once you're at an intersection, there's always a gray line of, so we probably should just assume if we're on the, would that be the west side? Grogan, the school side, right? It's on the street.
The west side over here, yeah.
Okay, if you're on the west side, then whatever we do there at that intersection, we'd have to make sure we're coordinated with them.
Yeah, so right now, the project documents are in this area. We did have a discussion a little while back about potentially extending this down, which potentially could, you know, expand the project a little bit, but right now, this would be the termination of the proposed project.
Oh, so we don't actually draw the line right to the school? We stop about a block and a half before the high school?
That's a limited work as we have at this point. It could continue on. It's, we looked at this and it's relatively flat, limited grade change, so it's something that could be added down the road. I don't know right now, but this would be the termination of the warden.
I would have thought the complete street, we asked it to go from the high school to the center, as I recall. We said from elementary to center and high school to center.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how we decided where to draw that line, but it's something we'd like to discuss.
Yeah, we wanted to connect the schools to the center, to the sidewalks. This goes back, what, almost three years when we started talking about this?
Doing Broad Street net brings both schools to the center are very common.
Yep.
The police chief also mentioned that he would like to see it in its entirety, you go to a school, obviously, because there's no current like evacuation plan in the event that there's like an active shooter situation or other issue. There's really no way for anybody to get on campus five foot. That doesn't hit like a road.
And we can actually make high school students walk to school because there's a sidewalk.
Oh, don't start that. People are going to take you serious.
No, no, we're bussing.
You give them a sidewalk, they can actually walk.
That's murban@townofberry.com.
Isn't it great? I had no kids. So I can just talk about what I was told when I grew up. I don't care if there's a sidewalk, you'll find a way to get there.
Uphill both ways in the snowstorm. So we all got there. But I assumed the sidewalk at this end would be easy between the school property and, you know, I'm sure they would be, they don't use that grounds there except for mowing a little bit, so I don't think they'd have any problem getting on that side to extend it to Grogan from the school. I don't think that'd be a problem. It's not a big distance. But I think I'd prefer to deal with the trees than deal with the Stetson property.
There are leach fields actually across the street, right on the east side. The high school leach field, I think goes across under the street and then it's at Hill or something, I think.
I don't know.
Right.
For some reason, I had a, in other words, I don't think like you're going to be abutting something like that right there at the rock wall on the street. I think they actually fight the cross and it's out of your way.
And it clearly would be a cross in that ledge.
Yeah, first conflict, we mentioned earlier about why we would cross. So if we go all the way down to the start of the project, you'll note that the start of the sidewalks are under construction, at least as of a couple of weeks ago. Coming down on the eastern side of the road, what we would propose is that they would cross over to avoid that ledge. You'll note that there's some room to work over here, so you could get the sidewalk all the way down. Again, there's room on this side as well. So anytime before we get to that ledge outcrop, which is around this corner, is a critical, is a critical.
Well, to have a sidewalk go by Cook's Canyon like that would be, preferred to stay on that side, so when either side approaches Cook's Canyon and stays on that side of the road, then come back, yeah, come back anyplace there.
As close as you can to Cook's Canyon. We talked a little bit about the fact that the trails are there and then kind of reemerge and it's like, really not a great situation to have people have to go out and get lost that night or out into the Cook's Canyon. Really want to promote that, but it would be helpful if people could walk to Cook's Canyon and then walk back to town.
It's tough to get lost in there if you stay on the trails. If you leave those trails, which people do all the time, you go out and look for people.
That would be a couple of weeks ago.
We go out there at like, you know, ten o'clock at night with twenty people and flashlights and looking for them. Get off the path, everybody wants to see the waterfall in there. There's like a thirty-foot, forty-foot drop. Someone always gets stuck there.
Once we cross over, we want to cross either cross back over or onto the, you know, the eastern side of the road to avoid having a goal in this culvert. There is a chance we could be able to modify that culvert to expand the width here to allow for a sidewalk. But the likely option would be to move back over and continue down the eastern side. Those are the biggest, I guess, arch points or conflict points that we would be up against in this stretch.
So we'd have to move that pole there or we go behind the pole?
In this case, we probably, we try to sneak behind the pole. I think this is probably our best bet. If we, again, I think any conversations we have to have, one of the first ones we have to have is with utility folks and see what, if any improvements they can do. We want to make sure if they have anything on their radar for improvements, that we coordinate it, so we're not looking at this twice. And if we can avoid it altogether, that would be great. Having that pole moved one way or the other to allow for that sidewalk may be an option as opposed to putting a structural element to expand the sidewalk over a culvert like that.
Right, now ideally, if we can get behind the side, behind the pole and leave that in the three-foot planting area, obviously, we don't want to move the pole up next to the side of the road that's just asking for accidents and plowing issues. And if we move it back further towards the trees, there's a lot of vegetation that's going to have to come out for the poles. So I think National Grid would resist us on that.
My guess is that that's about five feet or something off the edge of pavement right there or off that edge line. It's not opportune where they put them. I mean, if they're not thinking about a sidewalk in advance, they run right down the middle of what that available cleared area is, and it always inevitably is a conflict. So sometimes it is best to just, to work it out between what's the better option? Maybe, maybe it's getting an easement to be able to just put the sidewalk at the requisite width behind the pole line and you have a bigger grass area, a five-foot area between your pavement and your sidewalk, but you, it may require an expansion of the right way or at least taking an easement. So any, it's always a jungle.
I would think that might be easier than.
Than moving thirty-six poles?
Moving the poles, exactly, and certainly don't want them closer to the street and, you know, we're not going to fit a sidewalk in this side.
My guess would be with the infrastructure that they have here and the connectivity to the solar array and looking at the age of the poles, they don't have any intention of relocating power underground or doing anything like that. So they clearly have a robust, you know, set of poles there. Those poles aren't that old.
They went about a year and a half, two years ago, yeah.
Yeah.
Or do you know?
Yeah, in this instance, you know, I think if we can get over onto one side, you know, and stay on that side, especially crossing back over, it's going to, we'll end up avoiding a majority of the poles if we can stay on the western side of the road. It's going to be, you know, a decent option all along, you know, altogether. But it just, there's going to be a little bit of coordination there. You will note that there is some grade change over here, but it appears that it's probably workable for this versus crossing. Again, trying to impact or trying to work around, not for utility. Again, we're trying to eliminate or reduce the amount of crossings on side roads or intersections, but if we can do that, if that's the trade-off to avoid significant utility pole impacts on one side, then that might be the best option. Paints probably, if you prefer a crosswalk in this instance than relocating twenty or thirty poles.
Not to mention, there's a stone wall on that side, and that's another whole issue with stone walls in town.
I, yeah, I'll check in after we get there.
All right.
So I think, so I think those are the, that's the big picture. We got a little, you know, a little detail on it, and I think it's helpful for folks to see the corridor and for Ken to drive along on Google Earth and folks can put themselves in that location and understand how the plan is representing what's happening out there. But we just look for your guidance as to what our next step is. We do have a deadline on the grant, so it's a hundred thousand dollar grant that the town got, and I think it expires, the contract ends on June thirty or twenty-one. So it's the end of the fiscal year. So for our work, detailed design work to occur, we need to sort of get some direction at some point. It's not going to take us all that long to advance plans, but we just want to get a head start here and COVID has messed with all of us, but it's certainly delayed our schedule on survey and that sort of thing early on as we were starting this last summer.
Well, my opinion is it's easier to cut down some of those trees and move those poles on South Street. On Broad Street, I think it's going to be easier to go the alternate on the other side and deal with a couple of poles than it is to deal with the older trees and the old sidewalk and everybody's stone walls. So I would hedge towards the west side of Broad Street and the easier path you have here. Like obviously, in this case, the stone wall, it's probably easier to move a pole than to interrupt the stone wall, unless we get an easement and go on the other side of it, and then that might be the easier route. And that, to me, is preferred over going into Stetson's property. Matt?
I think all we'll do here is driven this one, which just will take a quick ride down to Broad Street so we can grab a quick view of that. Actually, it's a strip of Broad Street that doesn't have.
No street view?
No, a street view, right. And it's older, where you don't see the new sidewalks in downtown, but you can see at least a sense of this is the sidewalk and you can even get a sense of the trees in this area and the impact. So one of the thoughts was, you know, well, why, why would we continue to sidewalk on this side? Why wouldn't we just pull one over here? There's a pretty substantial drop-off in this corner. There is a new sidewalk that was put in here. You can actually see it here, but for the most part, it brings folks right around and continues on this side. So impacting on this side of the road, again, you have some sidewalks on the side to work with, but there are some substantial grade changes over here that need to be considered. As you can see, there's more room on this side of the road behind these utility poles. So unlike on South Street where on one side of the road, you have utility poles but less room, it's kind of a mixed bag on this one. The nice, the benefit here is that this is a slower speed, posted speed limit, and you don't have, it's not as a busy stretch of road. It's more residential than it is a thoroughfare.
Except when kids are present, that's when all the parents are dropping them off and all the buses are coming in, and when kids are there, it's the busiest road in town.
You know, that's the whole purpose, right, of Safersh schools, is that we're trying to provide that connectivity between school and the downtown residential areas. We want to make sure that they can get there in a safe manner. Things to consider too, as you guys, as you all look through these plans and these memorandums, the number of crossings is important, materials for construction, obviously the vegetation, but also any signage or lighting as we discussed.
Well, I also like the separation from the traffic on that side because of, when the students are there, that's a lot of cars, a lot of kids. And granted, they have to cross once down the bottom near the center, but, you know, the side roads crossing are less crucial than the main road crossing.
Right.
But I think just.
And then at the very top up by the school, you just cross straight across on those lane right to the property.
Yeah, Ken, what happens, right at the school? What's the?
So at this point.
Go right across that existing crosswalk.
Yeah, there are two crossings here. The primary option, this would stay on the eastern side of the road and just continue right to the school. And the alternate option, secondary option, you stand on the western side, cross over and get to the school that way.
To the existing crosswalk.
Either way, there would be connectivity from the school downtown.
All right. One of the things about the tree warden is the concept of public shade trees. Not saying that our town is void of trees, because that would be a foolish comment. We've got trees all over the place, but if you focus on the sidewalks on the west side, you are removing more of the shade trees, generally speaking. You get more of your heat build up in the afternoon, and so generally, if you can, you want to keep your trees on the west side of a street or obviously the south side of a street. But Broad Street, not necessarily overly concerned because of the style of the neighborhood itself. You've got trees, you've got a lot of trees, and you're probably never going to have to remove enough if you go to the west side, like Greg was saying. to kind of focus to work around the telephone poles and work around the tight confines on the right side or the east side. So generally, option two here for Broad Street, I'm also inclined more to go with. On South Street, I think we do need to pay attention in certain areas where we are cutting trees down versus not. For instance, at the solar field, the lack of trees adds to the snow blowing across that field. I'm guessing the development over time will help reduce that because they added that. The trees or shrubs kind of between the solar, when those grow out, it'll help. So we just may wanna pay attention to that as we're going. We keep that in the design concept, just to say, if either or is just as difficult to get through, we should focus on one that either helps with dealing with the snow blowing or maintaining the shade on the road to some degree. So in other words, just kind of think of the natural impact. When you're, when it really doesn't matter, you're either gonna have to take down a whole bunch of trees or put up a lot of retaining walls to hold back a stone wall on one side, or you're gonna go through seven utility poles on the other side. Both are obstacles you don't wanna have to deal with, but will have to. So at that point, maybe look at the natural criteria as a backup to make your decision. Don't get me wrong, I think we're gonna have to go through many things people don't want us to remove in order to accomplish this. But I think it's, it's something the town needs to do.
And I'd like, I'd like to minimize the number of times you have to cross a road in the South Street run. But obviously, I think going around that, you know, that river crossing, it's pretty important to do that on the other side of the road, you know.
I mean.
So right now with the current design, the primary route, we have one, two, three crossings of South Street. If we go at this ultimate loop and cross over here to Stetson's School, you'll still have that three crossing. But if we were to do, if we were to avoid this culvert and right here and, or if we were to try to modify that culvert instead of moving some utility poles, again, you're gonna avoid this crossing. And you may be able to, you know, you'd have to add in a couple for a while in that road, but it's a better crossing to cross an intersection where people would expect people to normally cross as opposed to having mid-block crossings where visibility along this road has, there's a lot of curves and a lot of twists that can impair a driver's ability to see and touch. So we just need to, you know, those are all things that we're gonna keep in mind. But it sounds like if we, if we focus on the minimizing of crossings, is there a? Is, would that be the best way to approach this? Is that we just try to minimize the crossings, or we try to, or is there some better place to start?
No, I think the ease of installation is probably the smarter place to start.
Well, if I can just jump in right here. So we have an opportunity to apply for a shared streets grant, and that opportunity opens up at the beginning of December. And so that may prioritize Safe Roots to School and Complete Streets, those kind of projects, enlisted, you know, sidewalk installation as an eligible project. The only thing is that the project would have to be completed by May thirty-first. So that, that would be a conversation I'd like to have with you guys on what the feasibility of that is.
Focus on Broad Street, maybe, designed so we could.
Yeah, the cap of the grant is also three hundred thousand, so I don't know how far that would get us on South Street, but.
It's a construction grant?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So maybe focus on Broad Street first and try to clean that up the way we talked about. And when that's done, we will get back to South Street more? Or you know which way, you know which way we're heading with it, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're under contract to do design docs for both. I mean, we could kind of dance one in front of the other if we wanted to go for bidding. I think that there are.
Why don't we do that?
Essentially more than three hundred thousand to do the work even on Broad Street. I think so, you're probably gonna need to allocate some, some town, you know, either town meeting funds or some other Chapter ninety funds or some other funding mechanism will have to go in place. You do have the access in the future to the four hundred thousand potentially a year through the Complete Streets program. So you might be able to piggyback a couple of those grants together and come up with, you know, seven hundred thousand and then you maybe allocate some other supplemental money depending on what it is. But I think, you know, we can, we can talk about what the timing is of that offline. The, but the, I, we understand what you're trying to get at on both of the streets. So I think our next step would be to take, just take a quick look at the feedback you've given us and how does that look?
Talk to the tree ward.
Make a couple of adjustments and then send something over, see if it is what you guys are looking for. In the meantime, you can let us know if there are other committees need to chime in. I know public safety, we heard something from the police chief, I don't know if fire chief has any comments or anybody else.
Yeah, he hasn't given me any comments. Jason, the DPW superintendent, he looked over them briefly and had some comments on Broad Street saying that the original, the primary plan, he would just wanna see more engineering on that, what it would look like if it was completely engineered with the grain of how the sidewalk, how the street kind of like slants to that side. So that was just his main concern was the way that the angle of the street goes, that the, you know, rain and other snow and whatnot, how that would affect that area, so.
Which is our, our next step, once we get a settled on the side of the road.
Right, I think we'd look for the other side of the road anyways at that point, so.
He seemed more interested in having the other through.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
And we'll, and we'll just obviously try to get into my topic, because that, that's always the good, that's always just, just good practice if you can.
Yeah, I mean, in Broad Street, you know, the crossings of the roads, the side roads, and I bet me crossing Broad Street, I'd rather not do anymore. On South Street, I really would rather cross as little as we, as we can. But, you know, if it's that much of a price difference, you know, we get the lights in. I'm sure we can draw powerful lights down there and get those in and get people across.
When you build out your specs, is it worth looking at how Broad Street could possibly be built into two separate phases of specs? In other words, kind of a, here's the prep work that we would be doing. In other words, if we complete that work, we, whether we have to remove trees, we have to coordinate with utility companies.
Sort of site.
We have to move some of our own, if we've got, say, hydrants there or something. And define that spec, working with us to determine, obviously, we do the water in town because we have our own water. So we're working with ourselves there. So that's not something you're writing in necessarily for a contractor to do? But when it comes to any changes in drainage that may have to occur because we did change something, or we have to put in a swale to prepare for changes, or we've gotta do the measurements and design to figure out how this may affect water going into people's driveways that didn't before, things like that. Break it out so that potentially one could be ready. If we could use it towards the December grant application, get that phase part done, and then your design is complete, and then come the fall, we can go for the four hundred thousand. And now possibly, we can use both design specs for Broad Street. And within a year and a half, without necessarily having to go to a whole bunch of town money, see if we can use grant money to cover most of that. So if you could look at that and see if there's a benefit to splitting the spec up into two different bidable specs for that purpose, it may really help us also in how we can manage it. I don't know if South Street might be more important than that, because you will have certain areas where you can kind of just say, there's a lot of prep here, we clean this up and get it ready, then we can have someone come in and just drop a mile of sidewalk later. But.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we'll talk about, we'll talk about it offline. I mean, it's a, it's a challenge, you need to sort of do your design and define the work. But when you go to bidding, you can, you could bid a piece of it out and exclude pieces of it.
Right, I'd move, I'd go like a quarter-mile stretch or something rather than, yeah.
I just may exactly build it with the idea of, on the drawing, you may be calling out certain aspects that would be Phase A and certain aspects that would be Phase B.
Well, and if there are relocation of utilities and such that you referenced, it could be by others and not bid by the contractor. So by others being by the town with their own resources, so as they, so as to avoid them bidding on it, so.
That would be the other part, that we need to get something in front of the utility companies. Obviously, you gotta get it to a certain level before we give it to them. So they know if we have to move it, because they'll go through their own engineering process and.
And we'll have an early conversation with them even before we get to that.
Yeah, I've already reached out to them, put them on standby, let them know that we're working on something, so.
Usually, they'll have a meeting with you and discuss what your thoughts are and give you guidance and feedback, just like you're giving us tonight, from your perspective.
And we're not ready for that yet.
Are you familiar with what's causing the power outages in that neighborhood like two or three times a year?
Didn't know they were having them.
Well, I mean, two or three times a year, you get this.
During storms or?
Statement of Union Street, Pleasant Street, that, whatever switch or grid or circuit that is. And I just didn't know if we've ever had issues on Broad Street with the power lines and is it at a point where if we're gonna make the investment, do we make the investment to start trying to bring some things underground rather than do it now and know we're never gonna go underground again for another twenty, thirty years? Because once you do this, you don't revisit it.
This spring, we had that windstorm early, and it broke a lot of branches, which still stayed in trees. So for the week itself, following that, all these random outages where those branches finally coming down and taking out branches. And depending where they were, it depends where the outage hits, you know, depending how the power roots.
No, I just figured we should ask, do we want this design to incorporate the concept of, on any of these roads? This is a road where it's probably in our benefit. If it's not even the whole road, this stretch is to somebody's benefit to get that below. Because it's just a maintenance for not only the utility company but also us. And I just, I was curious if it's something, I, I just think it's a question to ask, and not even say it's a right approach to take.
I predict the cost is way too high, and that's why they stay above ground there.
Typically that, typically that.
It's cost prohibitive, but, all right. Dylan, do you have anything to add before we say goodnight to these gentlemen?
Uh, no, I just wanna say that I like the secondary route for Broad Street. It would be a real shame to lose some of those trees. Otherwise, it looks like it's gonna be great to have sidewalks connecting the schools. That would be a huge deal for the, for the town. So thank you for all the hard work that you all are putting into this.
All right, very good, thank.
Uh, the comments that were coming through, I think were about somebody trying to connect in, so. Dylan, if you could just confirm that there's nobody trying to make a comment on the presentation?
Uh, no, I don't see any comments on the presentation itself, just, just knocking on the door to try to get in.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll be in touch with Jessica and with the DPWs superintendent.
Yep, we'll be in touch.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Looks good, I like it.
Have a good one.
See ya.
Next up on our list is Town Accountant Report, Gene Walcom.
Hi.
Hello, Gene.
Hello.
Real quick, Jessica, do you think you could figure out what's happening with Claire? She's trying to gain access to the meeting?
Yep, yeah, I'll look into this.
I might be bad and sneak a bite of a bar here, I'm hungry. I brought a few to share if people are hungry.
Thank you much, though.
I only have a couple hundred left from trick-or-treating.
Jessica, she says that her, that post has declined when it armed registration. Whatever that means.
That's really, that's really interesting because it was open to allow people back in, so I don't know why it would lock itself. Yeah, I have nothing on my end that says that it is locked.
Is there a waiting room? Could they, could the folks who are making the presentation not see that she was waiting in the waiting room perhaps?
Uh, there is no waiting room, I just have an attendees and a panelist. So I don't see any. And the welcome card is unlocked, so she shouldn't have. Let me see if she's in the meeting.
So, did you enjoy your weekend, Gene? Okay.
Yeah, it's not locked, so, and it's not even locked in my. I see a phone number here, three five five two three five. Maybe Karen can confirm with us that this is Claire, because that's a new one.
I'm in. Now I gotta figure out how to save everybody from my, from me.
Well, we just had some, two other people log into the meeting, so I don't know why it's locked for just Claire.
Did you lock Claire out of the meeting intentionally?
No. I would never.
You have to ask because you never know.
And then my email address, but I did it through the MyTownGovernment link, not anything you sent me or any link.
Right, so it's what everybody had access to, so. And we now have an Ashley as well, so. I don't know why Claire is having an issue, but. I will work on it, and you guys can proceed.
All right, so let's move on. We discussed at our last meeting recommendations made by our interim treasurer-collector. And one of the issues we discussed was changing our town software for the accountant to be on the VEDAR from the Softrite. And Gene would like to come in tonight and talk about that and prefer to stay on Softrite. And so I've invited her in to discuss that with us.
Okay.
Um, I wanna start by saying that I've been a town accountant thirty-five years. I have been, used a half dozen different kinds of software, including VEDAR. Full disclosure, I worked with Deidre Malone in Paxton for two years in two thousand five, two thousand six, when they were going on VEDAR, when their town accountant was going on VEDAR. She was retiring, so I went in and put in, put them on VEDAR, you know, when it's supposed on VEDAR. At the time, I was working with Peter Sam also and Sterling at the same time. So I think I'm a pretty good judge of accounting software for me. And I have to be comfortable and confident in my software. And so far, of all the software I've ever used, Softrite is like the most I've ever confident with. There are no glitches in the system, if there is, I can get one and just like that. And I barely, actually barely call them at all. I've been on the software, Softrite in Peter Sam since two thousand eight. It came into this town in two thousand twelve, I came here in two thousand thirteen. The person who put, brought software, Softrite in here was the town accountant. was the town accountant at the time, who was also CPA, who had a number of towns that he did, Barry was one of them. And he audited one of the towns. One of the towns audited was Newington, Peter Sam, on my Softwrite. So, when he was looking for soft, good software to put in this town, he chose Softwrite out of all the soft, all the software that he had seen over the years, which I think is a pretty good recommendation for the system. I know you had questioned whether or not Softwrite had tax collector capability. It does. It has utility billing, it has online payments, it also has receivables. So, it has the full spectrum of financials. It also has a cash program for the treasurer, which we did use here, Nancy was here, for about five years that I've been was here. She went on it. It worked out really well with me balancing with her. When Sharon came in, Sharon didn't want to use it, she went to Google Sheets for all the bank statements, for all the bank accounts. So, I don't think you can really judge the performance between the accountants office and the treasurer's office, based on the amount of time that Sharon was here, because she was only here for a year and a half. We were able to balance cash. It was good to see it all in one place again, because it had been a time-carrying weather. As far as VEDAR, we were trying to work on ways to get VEDAR to give me a report that I could balance to. She couldn't do it. It comes up with one page of payments, or one page of what the balances, one page of what the, you know, refunds were, nothing consistent that you could follow along to see what makes up those things. When Nancy was here, she used to do a spreadsheet on recent bills, which broke down by every collect, every turnover, refunds, pulled nine yards, we balanced all the time. She couldn't, she had been on VEDAR for years, she was on VEDAR here, no one could get any reports out of VEDAR. I really don't like VEDAR. Like I said, I did put the time to tax someone on VEDAR on the top side, and it was not fun. Considering I was working on Munis and Sturber at the time, which they called that pretty much a catalog of town software, VEDAR was not worth the money for our office. I don't mind the idea of putting everybody on the same, on the same stuff, but I really believe that in all fairness, you should check out the Softwrite side of it for, for all those things. I love their accounting software. I can get reports out of there. I know what's going on it at all times. I don't know the treasurer's side, because I'm not a treasurer-collector. I've never been a treasurer-collector, but I don't think a treasurer-collector can tell you what kind of software I should be using either. So...
Well, the biggest concern that had us discussing it was the, the re-entry of things. Data that was entered on, into VEDAR on the collection side had to be re-entered for you to look at that information on the accounting side. How much data transfer has to be repeated or redundant, redundant, or how much time does that actually take?
I don't think it takes a lot of time. We're not a really big town. And if it's being entered in VEDAR, even if we were, you know, I don't know the procedure on the collector's side to enter their payments in the report. I see the report that VEDAR gives, hands out. It's just a, you know, a summary of each kind of tax, and that's the way it's put into my system. I don't care about the retail of who owes what. I don't see people's names. I don't want to see people's names.
You just need to balance the book and the big number.
I see, yeah. We collected on real estate 20, we collected $200,000. Then we'll have real estate 19, or whatever it is, we collected $10,000. That's the way it's being put in. It's not being put in person by person into my system. It's being put in as a summary.
So, how many entries are we talking about monthly, or?
Well, it depends on the time of year when they're collecting taxes. I mean, it's just a matter of going down the sheet and posting.
But ballpark, we talking 100 entries, 10 entries, 500 entries? I don't know, you know, because we're, because we're not talking about all the interval collections, we're talking about the one number for collections.
Yes. I mean, there'd be real estate, motor vehicle, water sewer on a sheet.
So, that's sort of five entries.
Yeah, I mean, and then you got breakdowns a little bit more, but that's, and it's not, it's not like we're entering people one at a time.
So, it's not, we're not talking, see, I had the perception with looking at being redundant, the entering everything that came into the town, but that's not the case. You're going to have...
It's a summary sheet.
A summary sheet with maybe departments in, in just different classifications of...
Right. Right. I mean, in the treasurer's collections, the departments that turn over money, I mean, that's going to be entered into whatever tax system you're in, whether it's VEDAR or Softwrite, you're still going to have to physically take those pieces of paper, those deposits, and then turn them into, into the accounting software. So, it doesn't matter if it's VEDAR or not. It seems to me the hang-up is on the collector's side, when it's just a matter of, you know, a summary of what was collected on, in that deposit. That's all it is.
Okay.
I mean, I can do it in my office.
Yeah, we never heard a complaint about it from Sharon. It seemed to work. And that's just, talking to Gene, it's a very different opinion and a very different presentation than we got at our meeting two weeks ago, that somehow this, having her on VEDAR was the holy grail, was going to automatically transfer everything in and have it, you know...
Well, the potential for error was at it, because you're taking information from VEDAR and putting it into a Google Sheets or a spreadsheet that then has to go to you. So, they're typing it in twice now. They type it in as a collection itemized, and then they are taking summary totals from VEDAR and typing it into a spreadsheet.
No, they're not.
Then how are you getting it? Because you just said VEDAR doesn't spit out that summary report.
The turnover from the collector's office spits out a report, which is a summary of everything they just put into that deposit, which is every individual's name. VEDAR will spit that out. That's how they put it into Softwrite. It's a summary sheet. There's no...
You said she was, you said Sharon was using Google Sheets, and prior to that Nancy was using spreadsheets.
Nancy was using spreadsheets to give me a balance of, at the end of the month, of how much money, how much was in receivables. Because VEDAR won't do that. VEDAR won't give you a report of that.
But Softwrite would.
I, I mean, I, I don't know for sure if Softwrite will.
Because you don't know the treasurer-collector side of it yet.
I'm assuming it will. I mean, it gives me great reports on what I use it for.
Well, what I'm trying to clarify is, my understanding is there is information from VEDAR that is being manually placed into some other form that goes to you, that you then use to put into Softwrite.
My understanding is the report comes out of VEDAR in the summary form of the detail of all those checks they just put in, in summary form, where they went to. Then that sheet in summary form is put into Softwrite. So, it's just real estate, a number. You know, motor vehicle 19, a number. Motor vehicle 20, a number. That's all it is. It's just a list. That's all it is. On the treasurer's side, people turn over money, and those have to be put into, into Softwrite too. But those would have to be put into any accounting software. That's, that's a whole mother ballgame.
And what they're saying is if they...
So, it wouldn't matter whether...
Identified as a collection in VEDAR, it automatically populates the accounting side.
Yeah, and there's a problem with that too, because people make errors.
There's no redundancy in eyes on that.
And, and you know what? I don't want something populating my side of the, my side of the accounting without me knowing about it, and not verifying those numbers. So, they're still going to have to give me a report, and they're still going to have to let me look at it, which is how it's done now. Everything is verified before it even gets posted into my system.
Do you recall, when I started about three years ago, we had the problem between treasurer and accountant side. And what we're finding is that, that the treasurer was going back, they'd find a mistake, and they changed their numbers from two years ago.
No, I just, the number was changed, nobody could figure out who did it, because Softwrite didn't track who made the input.
It does too. My software tells me every time...
At the time, we had asked, we had asked, who was making the changes? And the response I got every time is, I don't know. We didn't find it, and we can't pinpoint it to this person or that person. And I was told it's because the software did not track the user's input.
Everybody who goes into Softwrite, everybody who goes into Softwrite logs in with their own name. And so, when you post anything, I can track everything. I can track, tell you everybody who ever used that Softwrite since it's been in this town. Everyone. And when, and what they did. So, I don't know where, I don't know where you got that information from.
And the last part is the third, like assessing is using VEDAR. Assessing.
Right, but the, what we're saying is...
It's not just two departments.
They use Vision. They use Vision.
I was told at the last meeting, they use VEDAR as part of their tax collection summary numbers or something like that. So, they're using VEDAR as well.
But they use Vision, and they bridge it into VEDAR.
But in any event, the numbers that go into the accounting side are being entered off of that spreadsheet. So, at least there's a, another, if it's not, if it's not, you know, two-day process of someone entering or pounding numbers in, it sounds like it's a half an hour of time to sit down and put numbers in for the end of the month.
Probably does, yeah.
And it's, so it's, it's not an exorbitant amount of time. It doesn't sound like to me now. And it's, it's another set of eyes on it, rather than just automatically, you know, going through the system. It's, someone looks and says, oh, wait a minute, that's not right. It wasn't 400,000, it was 40,000. Someone might catch that when they're putting it back through, whereas if the mistake was made in the first place, and it just went, you know, went through automatically, it's, but I, I'm...
I'm not getting consistent responses each time we revisit this.
And I'm, well, once again, my, my fault...
I prefer to have all parties in the room next time we talk about it.
Exactly.
So, I don't have questions from you, and then from the treasurer, and then from a third party, and then when I come together, nobody's talking the same story. They all think someone else does it differently than what I was told by the other person.
And that, that's...
And I would have been at that meeting.
But I can't sit here and do, I can't understand the problem. That's all I mean. I'm not saying anybody's wrong, Gene.
We don't need to go much further.
I may not be hearing it correct.
But I'm just saying, I would have been at that meeting if I had known.
Right. And that's, and that's, that's on me. I asked Jessica to bring Alex into it, because we were talking about the interim person in his position. So, I thought it was relevant to have Alex in the conversation. Wasn't, you know, understanding we're going to get into the accounting portion as we did, or I would have had everybody together. So, but given, I wanted to make sure she came and explained herself some tonight. I certainly have reservations about saying we should absolutely switch to VEDAR at this point. So, I think we should stay our decision to move to VEDAR until we get everybody together and talk about this more completely. And I'd like to see an example of what gets entered in on a monthly basis, that, that, what is it they have to enter by hand? I'd like to see a sheet of it. They may be embellishing, like, oh, we have to enter all these things. It may not be that much. Or, or maybe it's more than Gene understands. Maybe they are putting more than we understand they're putting in. But let's find out and get everybody in the room together, and, and at least hold off on this, the VEDAR for now. You know, it's not a question of clearly that she doesn't understand or know VEDAR. She does. She doesn't like it. And that's, that's a difference than thinking, I was given the impression she didn't want to learn the new software and move on, and that's what we kind of thought was going on. That's not the case.
When was the last time you used VEDAR?
2005, 2006.
What year is it?
21.
15 years ago? That software addition back then is...
Right, but...
And I'm just saying, it changes.
I know, but the point is...
Like, if I was using Windows 7, people would be laughing at it.
Hold on, please.
No, because Matt, I used Munis for 13 years, and it didn't change much in 13 years.
Well, people might not have been complaining about it like they were VEDAR in 2000.
All right, I'm going to say, hold on, everyone, that's enough.
No, I'm just...
Nope, that's enough. Please, let, let me control the chair for a minute. I understand your point. All right, systems do change. My point is, she's done many different software systems. This isn't someone like me that's just, doesn't like to learn it, can't learn it, doesn't like the new technology. She gets it. She does it. She doesn't like it. There's a difference between someone who resists it because they can't learn the new system, or don't want to learn the new system. She's dealt with several different systems. I don't doubt for a second her comprehension or ability to move into it if she wanted to. And I think she's trying to make a valid argument against the software, and I'd like to continue this at another time when we can bring Alex in and have a further discussion on it. Dylan, would you like two minutes before we move on?
Could I say one more thing?
In, in just a second, yes.
Uh, no, I think it'd be good, like you said, to have the relevant people in a meeting together, so we don't need to deal with the he-said, she-said kind of stuff.
Okay.
I look forward to, I look forward to that going down the road.
Okay. Gene, I'll give you one more minute, but we'll try to, we'll try to move on. I'm not delaying.
Just that if you decide to go to a full system, that Softwrite is considered on their capabilities for the, for the collection side of it, and utility billing, and it also has online payments. So, I appreciate that before...
That would be all part of our discussion, when we have the accountant here as well, and see what Alex is familiar with, and the other departments as well, how it ties in. But, go ahead, follow up.
Just a quick follow-up. When you do try to set up that meeting, do we have examples of the various reports that will be referenced as to what gets passed between each department?
Yes.
And what shows up in VEDAR, or what shows up in Softwrite, and why one might not easily translate to the other?
Right. Because at, at this point, I'm not seeing the advantage of changing. And maybe reports that show that, but...
And I'm not, don't get me wrong, I didn't mean to come off like I...
We were just getting too heated. We had to slow it down. So, let's, let's, let's move off this. Thank you, Gene, for coming in. I appreciate it. Once again, I apologize for not having you in the last meeting. That's my fault. I didn't, I specifically asked to bring Alex in, because we're, we're talking about his position. I didn't intend to get to the conversation as we did in accounting and get so deep into it. And you absolutely should have been here, and I apologize for that. And we'll make sure that you are next time.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you much.
Have a good night.
Police chief report. We have him for a separate report after we let him go.
Uh, no, so actually, that was kind of a placeholder. He wanted to talk about something, but he didn't get enough information on it yet. So, he's going to bring that forward that at a different date.
Personnel committee's wage authorization for Martin Scott, full-time medic, FD8, step one. I will stay out of this, as I normally do.
I make the motion that we approve the Martin Scott, full-time medic, FD8, step one, wage authorization as submitted by Chief Rogowski.
Motion is second. That motion, please.
A motion is second to approve the wage authorization for Martin Scott. We have any further discussion? Here now, a call for vote. All those in favor?
Madam Ehrman, yes?
Yes.
And also will abstain.
COVID update. Let's, let's go ahead and do it. Rip the Band-Aid off this time. Okay, so I, I want to update everyone on the CARES Act. We received our CARES Act funding round two at 100% of what our request was.
Excellent.
There was just a discussion between Chief Rogowski, myself, and the building commissioner about the feasibility of having such a large tent. They think that it's not worth purchasing because of the amount of work that goes into making sure that it's properly coded every time. There's a lot of codes that I didn't realize that went into having a tent that is so large.
Yeah, it has to go to the building commissioner.
Yep, the building commissioner. And then there's a lot of fire codes that Chief Rogowski would have to monitor. And there's very, like, limited spaces that we can actually put the tent, because we need a fire access. You know, we need it to be basically up against a road that the fire truck can get to. And they both said that it's, it would be way too much work for what it's worth. And then also, just the idea of, like, having someone there to set it up and take it down, that would require another level of commitment from the DPW that we, I, I mean, I'm sure Jason would do anything and everything for us, as he always does. But I think that, that's just like another level of complexity. So, from their recommendation, they recommended that we don't go forward with purchasing such a large tent.
Tent at all, or detention size you would...
Well, I was going to say, we could do a couple of smaller tents in lieu of...
Right. I think that would be more of a feasible option. And Chief Rogowski was also incredibly hesitant about the, the heating element of it too, just because that increases the danger of...
Right. It's got to be an air exchanger that doesn't, it's, it's got to be heat element outside with strictly an air exchanger for inside, which is...
Yeah, it has to be so many feet away from the tent. And then it also has to be, like, enclosed, so nobody can access it. And so, it's just, it would create a very large production for... for us to have this tent, so I think that we should have a conversation about maybe getting some smaller tents or, you know, using the money in a way that can help us in the long run, but maybe not going with such a large.
If we broke it down to a series of smaller tents, we could have one up at the typical podium area that would cover the board, the committee, the moderator, and have us up front that we could determine the size that will suit us, close in three sides, but so it don't get wind or rain blowing in on us and keep the front open to the public. And then you could have multiple tents of whatever size fits that we could put in, spread out or put close to one another, but I would assume if we left enough distance between them to allow for egress, that we could use multiple tents and get a similar capacity. And then, once again, if we don't need them all, we could set up one if, you know, if the senior center needed one for something going on an outdoor function, they could want to use one or two and not have to do the massive tent. Part of the massive tent is we could have used it for many things, but we could also use multiple smaller tents. And have the same capacity but not have to go full-blown building code, inspections, fire, everything else that we would need in the large one. The large ones are like building, steel building and putting a skin on it. That's why there's so much money. But by bidding for it and getting the money allowed, we have plenty of money to go for several smaller ones, several.
And then the other question was about storage, like where would we put such a large tent?
How do you store such a large tent?
How do you, yeah, I which I have no idea.
For the smaller ones, we could do, you know, especially if once we had them, if we had so many, we could put one in care of the fire department, one in care of the police department, one in the town hall, one in care of DPW, we could spread out different departments to keep care of a tent. Then when we need them, we could bring them all together and use them for whatever functions. We could store one in the senior center, see if we had five or six, we could spread them around, and they could be brought together to be utilized when we need them. Assuming we can get similar capacity out of it.
Going in that happy medium, obviously you don't want a tent too small that it's more of a 10 by 10 bump up.
Happy medium, GP medium, nobody knows what that is, never mind, it's an Army thing.
So, yeah, I'm just, I got you.
Yeah, I think.
There are considerations with the money we're thinking.
But stay away from Walmart.
Storage should be something that can also be added into that cost, so that we'll have a place to store when we're done.
Right.
Keep that in mind as an option too.
But look for a commercial rated tent, don't don't get the easy up the Walmarts or things that are, you know, the the gauge of the metal is much, much heavier.
No, for sure.
So we need a proper pipe pull tent, no matter what size we get. You know, maybe we can get three for that price, I don't know, but talk to the building inspector, talk to Bill first, because he's going to be able to give you an idea of what size he can allow without us having to get into permitting.
200 square feet or less like accessory building, I'm pretty sure is never gonna need is involved.
Right, well, 200 square feet is tiny, so that's not going to work, we're gonna need larger than 20 by 10, but.
It's actually, sorry, I have the memorandum from the state right here, and it says the building permits apply when the tent exceeds 400 square feet.
Okay, so 20 by 20 is pretty much bigger, or are you going 15 by 24 or something like that? So that gives us more leeway, but also it's our building inspector, we don't have to pay the permit fee for this. Now, we can certainly see what he's willing to work with that he thinks is a reasonable size to occupy for people that won't cause, this is up to him, what what he's going to be willing to let us put up, that he he'll be comfortable inspecting for us to get in with ease, minimal staking, and, you know, things, because you got to secure, they got to be tied down.
Right.
I mean, big time.
Usually you end up to bit, when you get into the bigger tents, you like to purchase the engineering that tells you how to properly install it and ballast it or spike it or so.
Or pour pylons to tie into.
And that's when the building commissioner pretty much just says, did you follow these rules? He does his inspection, he checks it off, done. He's not having to overevaluate it because somebody is doing the old standard engineering saying this will work in New England's wind region or whatever they want to call it. So I'm assuming that's part of that.
Right, so but we talk to Bill and see what he's comfortable with that he thinks will be the easiest thing for us to deal with, because it's gonna it's gonna be up to him to inspect it, and he'll have a better idea, I'm sure he's dealt with these at some point. Give us an idea, if we got to stay on the 400 square feet, we can do that, but I think we might want to get a little larger if we can, but also talk to the fire chief, make sure we're not tripping fire code at a certain size as well. Once again, if we do, not a big deal, Bob come inspect these things before meeting, he'll walk through, James will come up, they'll inspect them. It's it's not like we can't get things inspected in a very short period of time.
No, absolutely. I don't think the inspection piece was so much what they were concerned about.
No, it's a massive tent.
Yeah, it was more like the logistics and the safety.
But I wanted to make sure you put something like that with a bigger ticket on it, now we can get some smaller pieces, multiple ones.
Yeah.
And do what we want, hopefully with multiple tents and get a similar capacity. Yeah, setting up for those large ones is, it's like the Harding Allen estate, they have a massive tent.
You hire a company to set it up and put it down.
Well, no, but then you but that hiring is going to be several thousand dollars every time you do it is, if you've been to the Harding Allen, looked at their tent, they have a back, their back building is a tent. We were we were talking a tent that size. It's it's like a gymnasium is the size we're putting in, it's just, it's it's massive. But.
And I got you.
Okay, COVID, what else you got for COVID?
Um, so that was the biggest update on otherwise, everything is going pretty well. The state changed its how they rate cases, so so for example, like if Stepsin were to get a positive case, that would be a negative against the town, but now the state is separating out, you know, schools, institutions, so it doesn't like negatively affect, and that took a lot of communities out of the.
Right, especially ones that had colleges, they get two college students get in the town, like, but it's not us, it's a college, and that's where they were getting slated.
Right, so it really would impact businesses very negatively in a small community that has an institution like like Barry does in Stepsin. So other than that, everything is looking pretty good in Barry, not so much across the entire state. But I just have confidence that everybody in Barry is going to make responsible decisions over the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
I got one thing that's.
Sure.
A good kind of follow up.
Sure.
Did you see the email from the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, so just a reminder to those that are listening that may not have heard, but it was the last meeting, right, the first meeting in November?
Um, two meetings ago. We did it, yeah, two ago, I think.
Previously, the last selectmen's meeting before Halloween, we were discussing what areas we believe are safest for boards to have meetings, and it came up, we voted as a board of selectmen based on our power of the use of town property to say that the board of selectmen meeting is the safest space and the place we believe is where boards in permission should be holding their public meetings.
Public access as well, because they're supposed to be having it recorded if they're not having public.
Right, so when you when you take in the multiple layers of the executive session, I mean, the executive orders from the governor, early in in the very beginning, they relaxed a lot of the open meeting laws as long as you record it and make it available to the public. Generally, in this time, we've been using Zoom to do that. There are various places people have attempted to do that, and I believe it's hardest, from my experience, I've had difficulty when people have been trying to have a public meeting and record it, that's not in this room. And I'm not saying this room is perfect. But I have a real hard time hearing people when they're, say, for instance, at the senior center. The distance from the microphone and depending on your voice, if I was at the senior center right now, I think people would just be hearing that constant mumble. It just it rolls, I don't, I can't, I just can't hear it well. Speaking of which, I don't have anybody too close.
Their argument was for spacing, but I believe six people can space within, they don't have to be at the table, much like the senior center's a big room, we have a large room, they can fit six people in here.
The other part is we do have air filters, and are these the ones that also have the ionization of some, and ionization, which is, if you read into it, two-fold, one is it sucks everything in to get bigger particles, so the filter picks it up, pulls it out of the air. Second is certain positive or negative ions will actually kill the virus when it connects to their molecular structure. So we actually chose equipment for this room and a couple of the other, I think the police station, we had looked to do something like that for various reasons.
I would assume it's one of the same.
To provide the safest space we could provide. One of the things they came back with is they believe that the senior center's room being bigger and therefore more volume of air per person sitting there would be considered They reference things like ceiling fans help move the air around. I think there's a misunderstanding with that. If I'm sitting here and Greg's sitting there, but we don't have filtration and ionization, moving the air around just means I have to be further away from Greg not to breathe his air.
You can't be far enough.
Because it's now moving the air from him to me. So air moving isn't good unless it's got ionization treatment and increased filtration. So I do not believe using the senior center is safer in the quality of the air you're breathing. Secondly, due to the situation, I would also recommend rearranging this room. Stack all the chairs against the back wall. We've got the folding table in here, put it over there and put two more chairs on that. That now gives you the ability to put one, two, three, four, five people that are all six feet apart and they all have tablespaths. If we can find it, I would look for a second folding table, maybe like a six-foot folding table, even if we've got to go buy it at a store because they they're not hard to get, and put two more chairs at that. Now you've got technically six seats, which are five planning board members and an associate, and another table for the administrative assistant and or another individual that may come in, and you can set us all up, everybody six feet apart, but you have the increased ventilation equipment that we brought in, and we can maintain VCTV for those that are just watching and also continue Zoom to try to see if we can incorporate the public that way. So that's just my thoughts. I know that the planning board had asked us to re-review it, so I just wanted to put that out there and see what the thoughts are.
It didn't sound like an ask, it sounded like they were saying they want to continue on their own, which is not an option at this point. The the use of the other town building has been forbidden, and I for the same reasons that Matt's just stated, this room is, to me, it's it's on camera, which is one of the complaints we've had from people, that they're missing these planning board meetings, they don't have access to them, they don't want to go to the meeting. Planning board did say, well, we let some people into our meetings, but most people don't want to go to their meetings, but they have the right to view them, and that's part of the governor's orders, if you're not going to have public in, which they shouldn't be at large at this point, they should not be. They need to be recorded at the very least, if not broadcast, and we have the ability to do both in this room, and that's, to me, that's the major reason for using this room. We do have two filtration devices going in this room now, you're not going to get much purer air than we have in here. You can certainly get spacing, we could have somebody between us at three or even four at this table, we could definitely put another table in, somebody could work off a, you know, off a folder on their lap, not have to have a table, it's very usable as it is. We've, you know, we made that decision for a reason, and I would expect them to abide by that. We can't tell them how to meet, they can stop meeting, they do a different Zoom if they want, but if they're going to meet in person in a town building, it will continue to be in this room, unless somebody's making a motion otherwise, but I would oppose it. Dylan?
Yeah, I think you really went over all the points. You know, it's important that we have, that the public can know what's happening and the select room is all set up for Zoom, and like you said, it's got great air filtration, and there is there is space to rearrange things, so I don't have much more to add than than that.
All right. Thanks, Matt, for bringing that up, I was gonna just, I did want to discuss it before we left tonight, but Jessica, if you could reach back out to Doug Martin and let him know that the selectman insists that the, if any meetings in town buildings will be held here in the selectman room, and we'll make sure that Eileen knows that no one else should be utilizing that senior center at this point. Nobody.
Yep.
All right. Nothing else and other right now?
Can I butt in really quick about Jessica Claire's still looking to get into the meeting? I'm not exactly sure what the what the hangup is at this point.
Yeah, she's been messaging me too, and I think it's a glitch on her end, because I, there's no, you know, even Ralph Rogers just called in, so like the meeting's open.
Yeah, everyone's getting in, so I don't know.
I don't know, Claire's Claire just has a little bit of a glitch on her end that I can't figure out right now.
Claire, if you're listening.
But she is watching on YouTube.
Can she try calling in instead of videoing in, or is that what she's trying to do is call?
Yeah, she's trying and you go, and it's not working, so.
Okay, because we're up to the whole business special town meeting warrant, which is what Claire was going to call in for to discuss the finance committee recommendations.
Great.
Gentlemen, we could take a minute tonight and give our recommendations as we go on these. I will point out on the second page, Article 4, this is the issue that has caused me all distress in the last couple of weeks, is the balance, the FY20 budget, it should read FY21. That's why we had such an issue about it, our FY20 budget absolutely was balanced, I had made sure of that before town meeting. Like I said, I had several visits to the treasurer's office to make sure that it was balanced, so I couldn't possibly comprehend how it wasn't, and it's not the case. What happens is we have what they call our local receipts portion of our revenues, which includes excise taxes on motor vehicles as well as building permits and licensing, dog licensing, liquor licenses and such. Typically, every year we take that in, we bump it by two and a half percent, predict that for next year's number, and what we're allowed to budget is whatever we took in this year. So we forecasted level funding, at the end of the year, we didn't take in what we, you know, predicted. So we level funded, for an example, I won't use the exact number, but say we said it was $200,000 local receipts last year, we're just going to put 200,000 in this year and keep it the same. At end of year, when she did the books out, local receipts took in 119,000, so we're 81,000 short. So therefore, our budget is not allowed to be budgeted on the 200,000 forecast, it must be budgeted on the actual receipts of the 119, which leaves us 81,000 short in our budget. So we can either A, reduce the budget by 81,000 and make cuts, or take it out of free cash and finish funding the item. That's all that's for. So as we've heard from the collector, we've had $100,000 already come in from FY20, excise taxes, receipts, they can't be applied to that budget because the budget's closed. So although the money has come in, we would have made the mark, it would have been allowable, that's going to just have to sit there until free cash a year from now. That's all it is. So the 81,000 we're going to spend now, we'll absolutely get back a year from now, as well as the $100,000 in receipts we took that would have covered it in the first place. So the good news is we'll start our free cash, not this April, but next April, we'll start our free cash for something in the in the neighborhood of 200,000 because of this article. We can't spend it now, but we'll have more to spend down the road.
Right.
It's 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 not really a spending.
Okay, so we need to revise this.
To say FY21, we'll do that on the floor.
Article 4 title as well as the body of.
Yes. We have to change it on the floor to FY21. But that's a full explanation, that's what started my conversation with Gene last week, I finally get to talk to her, she explained what happened and why, and then we got into the conversation about the accounting software, she was pretty pretty upset she wasn't here, and I've apologized many times, that was clearly my fault, I should have invited her to the meeting, and we'll make sure she's here, like I said, next time. That being said, this article is published, is it not, so everyone can see it?
Everything's published.
Everything's published, so I don't want to go through reading everything, I want to make sure you guys have looked at.
One thing I do want to discuss though.
I was gonna say, make sure you guys, if you have anything to bring up, if you've looked at it, if you haven't looked at it now, if you want to bring something up, then Matt, go ahead, now's the time.
For me, it's. For me, it's, it's back to Article Eight. I'm just curious. It's a bummer that we can't get a hold of Claire. With the added 81,000 that it looks like we're going to be requesting to take out of free cash, if we continue to go a full free cash expenditure versus borrowing on the 285,000 on the ambulance, my question comes down to, one, what would that put our free cash balance at? I think it puts us at like 15,000, 10,000?
Low, yeah, very low.
And my, my thought is over the next year or two, would we prefer to maintain a larger amount of money in our savings account and only have to pay 30,000 a year for potentially 10 years, but also maybe just for two years? And then pay it outright? In other words, borrow it, spend 30,000 next year when we're already have decided to not increase our two and a half percent expenses because we've, we level funded our potential revenue. So we, we aren't even creeping into that levy limit ceiling that was a concern by putting 30,000 into your capital debt because we have room, because we're not spending that extracurricular growth in the budget because we knew it was going to be tight. So that what I'm trying to get at is, buy a year or maybe two with this. And if our free cash comes back in a war in two years, because some of the money that, like you said, didn't come in in FY '20, we're now getting in FY '21, so by the time we close books at the end of this year, all of a sudden we have another 100,000 or 200,000 and now we're looking-
Should be at least 180 right now.
Would we rather make sure we have the savings account, because when we're budgeting our budget for next year and we're going to go to annual town meeting, we won't know the real free cash growth?
This year, we're going to have nothing. You've got to know that. This year, free cash is going to be nonexistent.
And that's my concern is, that means when we're budgeting, we won't even have free cash to suggest supplementing the budget with.
No.
We're going to have to dig into stabilization. And do we want to go to that level if we can buy ourselves a year or two by borrowing the ambulance?
The problem with borrowing, Matt, is it put us over our levy limit, so it's, it could, because you and I both talked about this bond rating we want to get. And if, and as I'm sure this is what Claire will say, if we borrow that amount for the ambulance or any amount for the ambulance, we're going to push our levy limit above the preferred, it's above the preferred-
30,000 away from our 11 million dollar budget. That's all you're going to do is reduce your budget by 30,000 to within your existing limit. You're not going to mess with your limit.
It, but the 30,000 payment is not what the concern is. It's the, the actual borrowing total debt. We push our debt beyond, we, our debt ratio-
Concern, debt ratio. So that's not the levy limit.
Right. It's the debt limit, I believe, is a concern, that we're going to be extended too far beyond the recommended amount of debt, is my understanding what that was. And that's going to harm us when we go for a bond rating that, well, jeez, you went past your preferred debt ratio at this stage. You know, that being said, I talked to Jessica today a little bit about looking into, we did have an email a few, about a month or so ago, the state asking us to explain the expenses we've incurred because of marijuana facilities to justify us getting and keeping our host money, because if we don't do that, the state will take it. So they'll have extra money, we'll have nothing. The fire chief has indicated that he needs to buy carbon dioxide testing units because the facilities, as we know, especially the indoor grow we have going now, has a hypersaturated environment of carbon dioxide to make the plants grow, which is not good for people. There's a lack of oxygen. There is a system, a failsafe supposed to shut down, vent the room if it gets overcharged. But at this point, the fire department has no way to test that. We have carbon monoxide, we can test methane, propane, acid, all sorts of gases. We don't have anything in the fire department to test for carbon dioxide. So the recommendation would be the east, each of the first two engines out of, engine one out of station two and engine four out of station one, as well as the chief's car, should all have a carbon dioxide detector. You know, test, I don't even know what it is. If it's handheld or what type of test apparatus it's going to be. But also, we need a calibration unit for that as well. So we, we need to get a calibration unit. So we have expenses coming for sure. And something else, if you've gone to visit Dean's plant, have you gone up there yet at any point? What was the road like? Half mile of mud? We don't have a fire truck that can make it up that road. We don't have an ambulance, and thus, well, oh, we have a nice new all-wheel-drive ambulance. There's something we can put off as an expense towards marijuana. We have to now have all-wheel-drive emergency vehicles. We did the police cars, we just picked up cars, but we should pick up another pickup truck or all-wheel-drive truck. We should get an all-wheel-drive ambulance, which we did. And the biggie's going to be an all-wheel-drive fire truck. That's probably a 600,000, 700,000 ticket item. It's going to probably be for this point down station two, if it fits, which I don't think it does at this point. But that's a way we can look into spending this marijuana money when it does come in, is, is going towards these apparatus we need to get there. We couldn't, we couldn't stretch a line, get a four-inch line up to that building for you to fire if you wanted to. You're not going to carry them. You could start lugging them in a pickup. And then what are you going to do? Put a, you know, ground apparatus down to split it off into hand lines and control it by hand? I mean, you need an engine up there to be able to run a fire scene, and we can't get one there. And you need, ambulance has to be able to get there, and the new ambulance coming definitely will. I think when the old one's four-wheel drive as well, it could get up there, but like we know, they need to be replaced anyways. But I believe that's a legitimate expense we can put towards marijuana is getting emergency vehicles funded this way. So we talked about funding the ambulance.
You can't fund that with money you haven't received yet unless you borrow-
Well, that's the problem. We, we've got us, we, we can pay for it like we're planning to. And then when the state says, what's your expense? Well, there's our expense. And we had nothing to answer the form because we haven't spent money because there's nothing to spend yet. So I'm asking Jessica to clarify with the, with the state, you know, can we only tell you the stuff when we paid money out? Because we didn't plan to spend the money till it came in. Or if we can tell them what the needs are and start using it towards that. So she's got to get that answer and see if we can still give them an idea, because we'd expect some revenues to start coming in this April. Because Dean's plant operated at some capacity, probably about 50% or so this year. But there should be some revenues coming. It won't be substantial, like 200,000, of course. But it's, it's probably going to be, I would bet someplace around, I don't know, 30,000 bucks or something. And when the outdoor grows come in, they have potential with the, with the acreage to have a much larger sale. The potential's huge outside, depending if they have a good or bad year. But we could potentially look at 200,000, 300,000 a year for a couple of years if things go really well with them. And this would be a way to use it up to make sure we can capitalize on that money. And it's not like if we don't use it, they get it back, and now the state's going to take it. So that's a way, you know, hopefully we start funding the ambulance. I don't like to say use stabilization at town meeting, but next year, that's what we're going to have. We know that at the end of the year, our revenues matched our receipt, our budget, so we balanced out last year. There's not a lot of surprise money to come in and say, oh, look, we have 200,000, 300,000 free cash. It wasn't there. It's coming in now. You know, we'd have had that 100,000 extra if those receipts for excise came in last year, but they came in this year. That's why we can't fund that right, and that's why we're missing cash. That would have been 100,000 of free cash. But next year's budget, next year's budget, we'll have good free cash to start.
Not understanding at all this point of why we don't borrow. It seems like we're going to, we're forcing ourselves by that decision to use stabilization to go into annual town meeting next June.
I don't think it was our levy limit. I think it was our borrowing limit. That we're going beyond the healthy-
It's a recommendation. It's not a window that you can't, in a year and a half, you can pay it all off full.
But it's a hell-
I'm saying by time. We don't have the money this year. But okay, I made my point. I'm sorry. I'm not arguing.
And I understand, but the contrast to that is, you know, in my concern, I thought would be more of yours. We've been very careful working on this budget and getting things straightened out to go for a bond rating. And I just worry about putting any negative tick, just a, just a quick, you know, beyond the preferred debt ratio and back is still potentially harmful. It's still on the radar. They're looking at our-
You know the biggest thing Andrew did that we never did before? He made sure money stayed in free cash every year.
In this-
And we're talking about knocking ourselves down to 10,000 and starting as if Andrew was never here.
No, but-
It took him two years to get to that point. And to break it down now with the expected reduced revenues in the next two years means it's going to take us five years to get back there. I'm just concerned, but I've stated my point and I'll let it go.
Well, like I said, we were about 160,000 off, I think, in real, in real estate revenues last year. I think we'll get that back. And we've got 100,000 in excise, and now we have the extra 80 here. I, I think we're probably already looking at close to 400,000 to start with, not this April, but next April. So I think we'll have that healthy money back. I think we'll be able to start levying in, so, you know-
Do you think you're going to give your state revenues and-
Don't know. I don't know, but, but if that happens, and if that happens like this, this isn't our wrongdoing. This, this is the results of the COVID. And really, we want to get hit bad. If, if we hadn't have been nice and given people the delay on their taxes, they might have paid them before the June. But they waited till too late. They forgot they got past June. They got their penalties and the 100,000s in this year's books. Maybe if we left it alone, then we would have got that 100,000 last year. And then we'd still have that whole extra 100,000 of free cash coming to start this year and 80,000 more on our hands right now. But the COVID, through a monkey mentioned this, I'm not worried about our planning and our actions, and I would bet that we're doing a lot better than a lot of communities are. Especially areas like Worcester, I think they're urban, and the bigger cities are going to get hit a lot harder than us as far as collections and things. We've been pretty fortunate, but yeah, we don't know what the state's going to do. We don't know where the numbers are. I guess the preliminary numbers are, the school committee is saying they're out, but they haven't released them to what the school aid and stuff is yet. So we'll find out soon. But we're going to be in the same boat as everybody else. We're not going to be, you know, oh, look at Barry, they messed up big this year. We didn't. You know, we, we did a good job. We picked up the things we needed to pick up. We paid what we had to pay for. And the ambulance, we both wanted to fund it, but as I understood, it's putting that, that debt limit to a bad ratio. And I, you know, maybe we can talk to Claire about that, the finance committee. And like I said, maybe do a portion of it, borrow a portion and pay a portion and keep some money aside. And maybe we don't borrow 285. Maybe-
The reason, the reason I really brought it up is it's, it's important because the way the law just posted it is it's a majority vote. And we'll have to revise that on the floor if we're going to go for borrowing. It's got to be a two-thirds vote. So we can't decide in December that we decide, oh, we'd rather borrow now. And so it does have to come to a head, and I understand the concerns about debt ratio. But that debt ratio also is based on what do you have in the bank account?
Yeah.
So I'm good. I said all I can say, so I'll let it go. I appreciate the time.
Let me just give you one other thought. What if we take the 45,000 for the admin car? And we borrow that and keep 45,000 in free cash? Keep something to roll over.
That'll just let you buy a cruiser at the next budget. What's 45,000 going to buy you versus 85?
It just puts, it puts something. I know.
I hear what you're saying. It's still better than nothing, so I'll take that over nothing, but-
But that's sort of the, you know-
I'll, I was going to call Claire.
Yeah, why don't you try that, please?
Yeah, we got all the time.
All right. So without, without, Dylan, do you have any other articles you want to look at or discuss? And as I said, Article 14, the senior center roof replacement is something we planned to not move forward with, but didn't want to strike it till we hear what Ellen had to say about it, Eileen had to say about it. But, you know, we have no-
Otherwise, no, I don't have anything extra right now.
All right, because we, we've got no bids or plans for roofs, though.
Yep. Okay, can you guys hear her?
I have the, I have the meeting on my TV, so I can hear what they're doing.
Want to put the speaker back up by her phone? All right, we'll try to get you closer to a microphone and see if we can make it so people can hear you.
Well, I set you up on my TV, so.
All right. Well, we can hear you, and hopefully they can hear you on the TV.
So Claire, did you hear our discussion about the ambulance and the funding and the use of free cash?
Yes, and we are saying that the ambulance needs to go with free cash.
So you don't see this creating an issue where come April, you're developing a budget that requires stabilization funds in order to budget FY '22?
I'm not looking to have to do that at all.
What if the state funds come in 300,000 short? Do we try to cut 300,000, or do we dig into stabilization?
We work with it. Yeah, we had a big discussion on the finance committee meeting.
And?
Maybe this is the best.
And?
I'm, I'm trying to get the sound right between the phone and the TV, because I can hear you better on the TV than the phone.
It sounds very delayed on the TV, though.
I'm trying to get the sound right between the phone and the TV, because I can hear you better on the TV than the phone.
Sounds very delayed on the TV, though.
12 seconds. It's a 12-second delay, Claire. And now it's rebroadcasting.
Yeah, yeah.
Claire, Jessica, could you move that back away from the speaker? It's, it's doing the loop now. It's doing 12 seconds. Claire, it's not going to work. We're going to have to get your recommendations on the meeting floor. We'll try to meet a little before and get those tallied up so that the moderator can give your recommendations on the floor. I mean, I would make a motion, gentlemen, for us that we give a favorable recommendation on Articles One, Two, Three, Four, when we amend it, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, Ten, Eleven. We took 12 out and didn't read number? Thirteen and fifteen.
Yeah, somehow about 10 of us looked at it and nobody caught that 12.
So that was a motion to us to vote favorable on those.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion to second for favorable, basically all except for 14. Any further discussion on those?
Yeah.
Matt?
Just want to, uh, where is the article relating to the 2000, okay, Article Three? So Article Three, if I'm correct, removes the 25,000 previously given to the senior center for the energy efficiency upgrade.
Correct.
Article 14 would be intended to reallocate that to a roof replacement.
Correct.
And so you're recommending remove the energy efficiency funding, but don't reallocate it?
We're reallocating it towards the admin vehicle for the fire department.
Where?
We had 36,000 left in free cash. Adding that 25 gave us 51. Let us spend 45.
But we also have 10,000 coming out for OPEC and 2,100 coming out for the-
Right, to get us down to the 36, right.
That would get us down to 23.
Well, right, but 23 and 25 is 48. We're looking for 45. Still- Well, right, but 23 and 25 is 48. We're looking for 45. Still, we brought it all down to leaving about 3,000 extra. That was it.
Yeah.
So we're reallocating the money from the roof and the scene, that they wanna use for the roof. We're gonna deny it because there is no plan for the roof. There's no bid. There's no RFP, RFQ. There's nothing going on for roofs, so we can't go allocate funds to something that doesn't exist.
Okay.
So we allocate that towards the vehicle and allow the fire department to get their admin vehicle. And we still did remove, as I told the chief before this was announced, that we removed the brush truck that he asked for, because it's simply not there. And we did promise and we'd get back to this if we could at this time, and that's the best we can do is that one.
Okay, so we, in your motion, you pretty much just regarded-
Everything but 14, yes.
Okay.
And made a note that we're changing 4 to say 21 instead of 20.
But that'll be done on the floor, 'cause everything's already posted?
That'll be done on the floor, yep. Any further discussion?
Nothing more.
Okay, and then we'll be calling for a vote. Are those in favor of giving a favorable recommendation to those articles?
Matt Urban, aye.
Real quick, I just got a message from Claire. Do we wanna discuss that and push this vote?
I'm hoping.
Uh, we- Sure, we can listen to the message first and pause the vote.
Okay. What she tells me is, quote, Joshua, town moderator, is going to do consent agenda on Articles 1, 2, 6, 8, 9, and 10. And they recommend unfavorable for admin fire vehicle. Says she talked to Rob at FITCOM meeting. He's agreed to wait until annual timing.
Okay, are there reason for unfavorable?
So yeah, I guess that would be unfavorable for the admin vehicle.
Why?
Reduced expenses, I'm guessing, overall.
Because, like we said, 'cause of 45,000 in free cash helps? Or because they don't understand we're gonna allocate the funds from the senior center?
I'm guessing it could be both.
Well, they voted favorable for the senior center roof and then-
Oh, so there you go. So there's no money then.
Right, but they had also, I mean, I was at that meeting and my understanding that they voted to take the admin vehicle out of stabilization.
Okay, so I understand theirs. It doesn't change my recommendation. I don't know if it changes yours. So I'll, once again, I'll reaffirm my motion that we vote favorable on all these articles except for 14. Bearing in mind-
Second that motion?
Motion to second. Any further discussion?
I'm getting updates from Claire as we go, but I think we should vote anyhow.
Right, well, what I'm saying, Dylan, is I'll do a little discussion. Their recommendations are different than ours, so I don't want theirs to influence ours. We put the things on here that we thought were right for the reasons we did it. We did not do the roof because we can't do the roof. Period. You can't do a roof. There's no RFP. There's no RFQ. So they're recommending money for projects that can't happen, and they don't understand that. Because we allowed it to stay on here for now. We shouldn't have. We probably should have stricken it. We had the chance. If they understood that we didn't have the money going to the roof, they might allow it for the vehicle because it would be there, and then we don't touch stabilization. But notwithstanding, we'll talk about that on the meeting floor when it gets up in front of the town for discussion. And they'll hear our points and vice versa then. So any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for vote. Are those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Yes.
And Greg O'Sullivan, yes. So now we have Article 14. I would recommend that the board of selectmen have an unfavorable recommendation on Article 14. As discussed, we don't have any plans for roof.
I second that.
I have a motion to second for an unfavorable recommendation, Article 14. Any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for vote. Are those in favor of the unfavorable recommendation?
Matt Urban, yes.
No, Mark, yes.
And Greg O'Sullivan, yes. That takes care of our recommendations. We don't need to see the finance committees. It would have been nice to share them tonight, but people will see them at meeting. You know, if we could. If you could print out a sheet like this for the town meeting that just has ours and the finance recommendations on it, so people can have that in hand rather than... It's, I know that they'll be told at the meeting, but it's a little easier if they can look at it themselves and see what the recommendations are, where the boards stand. And I'm sure we have inquisitive town folks that will ask us why, and we'll have this discussion then. Anything else in the warrant before we move on? Okay, approval meeting minutes. I haven't read these through. Wait, these are the older ones.
One of them was tapped on from the last meeting that got tabled, and then the other two are from the last meeting. One's an executive session.
So I haven't read the other ones, 'cause I just, I haven't seen them until just now. But I think that October 19th, I had read before and I was okay with, we were holding off for everyone else to get a chance to read them. I believe where I was at with that. You guys all right with those minutes, Matt?
I have for no further reason to hold off on both.
Okay, Dylan, you're all right with the minutes for October 19th?
I am, yes.
Okay, look for motion on the minutes for October 19th. I'm gonna hold the other two so I can read them.
I make a motion that we approve the board's selectman meeting minutes for October 19th, 2020.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion to second to approve the meeting minutes October 19th. Any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for vote. Are those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes. Dylan Clark, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. That'll take it in the meeting minutes. We'll hold the other two, 'cause I do wanna get a chance to look at those before we put them up for a vote. Reports, we have correspondence. The only correspondence we had was-
From the planning board.
From the planning board, which we covered, and from Phil, there was a complaint about our commission meeting. The gentleman that came to the meeting complained to the Board of Health that they didn't feel we had proper social distancing and mask wearing. So perhaps we'll just make sure in the future we keep those meetings closed to the public, 'cause we're really not set up to have public in those meetings. And we can reiterate and offer this room to that commission. But we can't change that ourselves. There is a commission of six other members than us. And the chairman of that board would control that. And they feel comfortable doing it in the building, which is controlled by the DPW Commission, and that's why they continue to hold the meetings.
The only thing we can do is request to have it put on the agenda and have the commission as a whole vote on it.
Yeah.
It's not a chairman decision by himself.
Right, we can ask, but it's gonna be held for that meeting, so we'll bring that correspondence through. You know, Phil's just asked that we basically be careful and look at the protocols and do what we can. So I think we should make sure they close this.
I think his comment was, something was reported, please advise.
Right, something like that, so-
And I didn't quite know what that meant, so I left it at that.
You know, yeah, we do sit close together at the table. Those meetings are very brief. You know, the original mask wearing is if you're in a room for more than 20 minutes, wear a mask. Sometimes we're out there 20 minutes, but we certainly could move to the larger area if they wanted to. Some people wear a mask, some aren't. You know, it's the comfort level down there. But I think they might be wise to close it to public, 'cause it is so small. At least, it's nice to invite them in, but it's, you know, not a-
Close it to the public, we have to make sure it's recorded.
Then it should come here, or be in the bay, which is what we offered to them before. And it's either we should have it in one of the bays out there where they can spread people out and spread chairs out, or we should come back here.
I've talked with Jason and Shannon about that, too, and what they know. This room is open and it has access to the technology, so...
Right, and the problem is back here is now we're putting nine people in here. We're still not gonna have visitors in that room, 'cause once we have nine in here, we're not gonna invite more visitors. It's not smart.
But it wouldn't necessarily be needed.
No, we could certainly have the input this way here, so... All right, selectmen reports. The gentlemen have anything?
Yeah, I wanted to say really quick, just a mention of my gratitude for Ellen Quinett and all the coworkers for doing such a bang-up job back on the 3rd. It feels like a long time ago, but I feel like it's worth mentioning. You know, Ellen and all of her people put in a lot of hours and I'm sure it wasn't fun suiting up and keeping everything green for so many long hours, so many days, all during the early voting period and everything else. So I just wanted to say that from my perspective, I really appreciate all the work that they did. And I feel like my colleagues here on the board most likely feel similar.
Well noted. What people might not realize, and I didn't, was the over 1,700 early cast ballots, most of which were done early in person, 'cause we offered it. I believe, and don't, I'm not gonna take this to the bank, but I believe we had about 400 mail-in early ballots and about 1,300-plus early voting in person, 'cause we opened it up. So that was very successful. She asked for more lighting. We get it for, and that was tremendous out there. But those 1,700 ballots, her election people had to open, document with the signing out and place through the machine during that day. So they had to run 1,700 ballots through those two stations on top of running the elections. Which means when you get your ballot, you can get multiple ballots signing in by asking for it, by mail, coming to early and showing up at a meeting, but it's up to your election officials when you check out to only let you check out once. And they have to go through with every single one of those, open the envelope, verify the name, and put it against the list to make sure that hasn't already been voted. So it was a lot of work, and you're right, it was tremendous, and they did a great job.
Thank you very much, Dylan. I'm glad you brought that up.
Very good to bring it up.
It's very important, and I can't say enough about the people in our clerk's office and our election workers that support us every year, as well as the new ones that came in this year to help with the workload.
Including our former town administrator.
Yes.
She is still working. She actually came back and worked the election for us, which is very nice.
We are blessed to have the people that commit themselves to this town like we do.
Matt, do you have anything?
I do not.
Well, as luck would have it, I do. As you may know, Thursday evening was the school committee's meeting.
Oh, was that bad?
It was, part of it was an executive session thing, so I'm not free to talk about exactly what they did or what they voted on. But I can say overall that I was led to believe that I would be going to this group for part of the collective bargaining with the groups. But as was outlined, they basically have been doing so since March. And they wanted to bring forward an offer for the group to look at and discuss and vote on. So that's all that was allowed for input from all of our selectmen. That's all I could do is go to vote on what they had already done, so that will come out-
But you weren't allowed to participate, or you had one vote?
You could discuss what was brought to the board, what they negotiated. We could discuss that negotiation. Certainly put my two cents into that negotiation. But overall, it was there for a vote. So they weren't looking to change or realter things. I would suppose if I had a very compelling argument on something, they might have, but I really doubt it, the way it went. In the future, when these minutes are put out, we can have full discussion in the meeting. I look forward to filling everybody in on exactly what transpired at that meeting and how it went. And overall, I feel it was a waste of three and a half hours of my time. That's a strong statement. Well, I had sat through the whole meeting first. I sat through the whole meeting first to get to the executive session portion, which was relatively brief. But, yeah.
Do you believe that they offered and requested participation from the five towns according to the agreement?
I don't know.
Or they have offered at the end of the process they should have started with?
I don't know. We need to look at the agreement. My recommendation would be if the agreement says we're supposed to be in the process from the beginning, I'm PO'd enough that I'd recommend going after a court injunction to stop them from filing. Moving forward that, if it wasn't done promptly, 'cause I really feel that my opinions were not weighted and not concerned and meant absolutely nothing there. And I think the other towns, when we can look at this and hear the minutes of the meeting and see it all in the future, it'll all make sense. But this was, you know, their collective bargaining began, I think, in March. So I don't know how much they've really done or when they did it. But they brought through their final, here's what we worked out, here's what we want you guys to see. And they showed us what they've negotiated and just wanted to vote on it. So they allowed us to ask questions, and I did and made comments. And they were rebutted strongly. Several members of the committee went and made them. And then they voted how they voted. I don't think we can even talk about their vote or anything, but-
Yeah, we're probably getting a little too close, so I agree.
No, it's just, but the participation for the select board was not a real participatory seat. Our select board voice was not heard by the committee. Our select board opinion was not represented in the collective bargaining for the first units that they've brought forward the other night. They still have other ones to go. And I don't know how the contract reads. I don't know if we're supposed to be involved in the bargaining or if we're just supposed to be allowed on the committee to have a vote. If that's the case, then they allowed me to vote. But it was, you know, I sat through a long meeting and finally get down to the executive session, which, nah, I feel people's pain when they come here and they have to sit all night. You know, most of them don't even, it's unbelievable. Most of the school committee members, they don't have the decency to stay online like Dylan is. Their video's gone, their mic's gone. It just says their name. Who knows if they're even there, unless they talk. I was one of the few people that kept my camera on the whole time, my mic off, 'cause I'm not participating in the meeting most of the time. Although I did ask a question once, but it amazed me that most of them don't even keep an image up, don't stay attached to the meeting. Very different than I'm used to for the Zoom meetings. They're at least logged in and they're registered in the meetings, but I don't really know how many people were really participating in those meetings. Other boards talk, I think they're kinda just, seems like they're tuning it out, but I don't know. It's just-
I have a-
Why would you not keep your picture present if you're at a meeting?
Can you share a copy of the regional school agreement with the three of us, so we each can, I don't know, but how-
Well, we need to find the section for that, not-
Size? Well, yeah, but we can dig in and at least get a feeling for it.
It's only 14 pages.
Is that it?
Yeah, I don't-
Oh, we gotta rewrite that. We so have to get into that. We talked about that last year, tongue-in-cheek, but 14 pages. Boy, we need to rewrite that.
Yeah, I'm taking a quick look and I'm not seeing anything about collective bargaining and the role that the towns play. Chief Carbone has also questioned our regional agreement with the school. So, I mean, I've already started discussions with other towns about having everybody meet and revisit documents like this. I don't think, this hasn't been updated since 2014, so...
And we may wanna find out if that 14 pages is the agreement for revisions or addendums to the original founding of the school district.
It just, it says agreement and, yeah, it doesn't say that it's-
And I should say, at the end of their meeting, they came out of executive session.
Sure.
And they announced that they passed those contracts, so I don't know if the whole contracts are released to public yet or not, or whatever. But they did come out of executive session to make their form- to public yet or not or whatever, but they did come out of executive session to make their formal vote and approve them. So it's not...
In their mind, they're done.
They're done. And they should be, I don't know when they're released for public view. That's why I won't talk about the content from the executive session.
Review and approval of the meeting minutes.
What's that?
I think that, I think they got to go through and review and approve the meeting minutes.
And then you'll see, you know, just when it comes out, you'll see the contract. It's, you know, there's some things I liked, and there's other things I really didn't. But there was no relevant input from us. There's nothing we can do to have affected that at all. So...
Thank you. I was confused. I thought Jessica Bennett's email was saying something like they were about to initiate something on the night.
That's what I thought.
Not make their final decision on the night.
Voting, yeah, so we're allowed to have a chair to vote.
I'm not familiar enough to know the process.
I don't know either. And I believe it's, but I believe it's a three-year contract. They should have come up during your term.
First time I remember even a request coming to the board, but again, that doesn't mean three years it couldn't come up and I just...
This is also a different superintendent that may be digging in and trying to do things differently. Maybe the last superintendent didn't bother looking at that requirement. I don't, I don't know.
And Charlie Chase was very familiar with the school committee. He had been on it prior, so it might have been at that time also, if it came up, it might have been a quick little blurb, and he's like, "Yeah, I'll do it," and it just happened. And he's familiar with the, maybe the process is you show up and you can vote however you want, but it won't really matter because the committee's already decided, and they're the ones that are telling you what they're going to do. And I don't mean that in a negative way. I'm just saying, I'm just trying to summarize it briefly. I'm not...
Right. Don't know, but it wasn't what I expected. I expected we'd be involved in negotiations and sit down with collective bargaining and have input. And so that wasn't the case at all. It was pretty much just vote on it. I did get to make some comments, and they were very heartily objected to by multiple committee members, which is not a surprise.
Find out if you also have input on review of those meeting minutes because you are a participant as a voting member in that meeting. I'm not saying that you don't, but if it's something you think should be on the record, might want to know.
Yeah.
I'm forwarding you guys a link to a state statute that says that we have to have a municipal representative. So this isn't something that's in our agreement. It's actually a state statute, and I don't have, I haven't read it enough in the last five seconds to make a decision on what it is.
That would be perfect.
That I'll have no problem. Statutes and regulations, that's easier to read than the contract language.
That actually might have been what Jessica referenced in the email as well, right?
And it's...
She did say state statute.
It'd be easier to understand that than it will to navigate the contract, the municipal agreement with, you know, for the region. That'll be easier to understand, so I look forward to looking at that. But that's all I had for the input there.
I appreciate it.
Administrator report, Jessica. You can hab at it.
Sure. I just have a couple things that I want to bring out. So I looked up, at the last meeting, it was discussed about having one board of selectmen member signing to approve the bills and the payrolls. And so it is undermanned. General law, it is allowed that select board may designate one of its members for that purpose, provided that the member shall make available to the board, have the first meeting following such action, a record of such action. So basically, just...
So I get it?
I, yeah, and, you know, obviously, everyone has access to see that, those bills and payrolls at any time. So whenever, so it doesn't say that you cannot allow the town administrator to be a second signatory, but it does say that at the very least, you can have one select board number signed.
See, and I don't know if that benefits us because then whoever it is has to be here every time for every, for every one.
It's your burden exactly for two weeks.
Right, versus at least now, I mean, we all got, we all signed it, I think, this time. We all got in and signed it.
Yep.
Or...
Got in twice. I got in for the payroll and the paypart, I think.
Yep.
But I came in, I think one was already gone. I think you guys had already signed the payroll. I came in Tuesday morning, like, or at 8:00 instead of Monday night, but it was already done and gone, so it was...
Two things, just boom, get it done.
But yeah, if we, if we get that, if they get that notice, you know, it's not...
That's Sandy. She's really efficient.
Well, no, for me, it's a sort of a, I don't know, half a mile for a man. It's about a mile and a quarter. It's not a big skip. I don't know how far it is for Dylan, but it's not too difficult to run down.
A lot of travel from the house here.
Right. And once again, it's, the AMP, we need to go through, and I like to, I like to sit and go through it and pay attention to it. The payroll is less, you know, you look at now and then if you see something or you're worried, you're not worried, but wondering about something, you might look at it as particular time slips or something. But generally, you trust your department heads to get that done, and they're the ones that keep tabs. The employees, you don't know who's been in or not in it. So there's not a lot we can do about it, but sign it.
One thing I would like to just bring up is just to make sure, we've had a lot of turnover in various places since Andrew left. And when you add COVID to it, you don't have as much face-to-face. You come into a new place, you got to figure things out, learn it out, and then you realize what you thought it is is a little different. I just want to make sure that any of the new positions, whether it's a bill Cantel with the building commissioner, Alex is treasurer, collector, in a way you, you... The existing policies that are in place cannot be changed without the board of selectmen approving it.
Right.
And all of those people need to know that that's not their domain. You can make recommendations. You can justify reasons why you think policies should change, but you cannot determine a policy doesn't fit what you believe is correct and then just not follow it. It's not an individual's place. It's a board of selectmen's thing. So I just wanted to get it out there and make sure that it's passed on to any of the new employees that they understand that if this is the policy, or if the policy's vague, but then there's been a 13-year practice, you can't just change it without bringing it to the board's attention.
Okay, for sure.
So...
Continue.
Okay. I also want to let everyone know that we had to schedule a public hearing for Monday 11:30, which is the last Monday of this month, and would typically be an off week for us. But we need to get our tax classification hearing in, and there's also an application for a new liquor license. So both of those will be back to back on Monday, the 30th, and proper notice has gone out into the newspapers and whatnot, so just wanted to let everybody know. And then my last update is that I have gone back and looked at transfer station RFPs, and I compared it to a number of different towns, and every town's RFP was very similar. I didn't feel like when I was comparing our RFP to another town's RFP that there were huge differences that would potentially favor a certain company. And they were both, they were all about 50 pages long, and in some ways, I felt that ours was strong because it was very, a lot of things are a lot more clear than what was detailed in some of the other RFPs that I've looked at. So I can bring that back to the board for the next meeting, but I just want to let you know that I did review it, and I do feel that ours is competitive with other towns based on comparing them, and I didn't feel like I, that our RFP would favor a certain company over another.
Okay, good. Now, I think that was partially cleared up, that you guys had said that Andrew had been working on this, and it wasn't so much the one that was presented by the consultant anyways, which was my concern.
That's what I thought I remembered.
So, yeah, glad...
The next time around, Andrew got in.
Glad, glad to know it's the case and to know it's a neutral and normal thing before we send it out. That was just, I'm glad you guys entertained me on it. I'm glad we get that concern alleviated, feel better about it before we go out there with it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the follow.
Well, it's that time.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will second that motion.
Motion to second to meeting be adjourned. Any further discussion here? Now, a call for vote. Are those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
No, Mark, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Good night, all.
Thanks a lot, Dylan. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye, Dylan.